Did you do something different? Think of this. Think that's on the. There. Okay, we're.
Good, okay. And let's like it. Push the one happy video.
Think two days is.
Did you send it to the?
I can't find it, so I'm sending it through Bill.
Okay, but we can still continue, can't we?
Yeah.
So audio.
We're on audio, we're good.
All right, additions, agendas for changes. I have a change, we're going to be removing the Smithfield contract, that needs further review.
Have an ad. Um, employee holiday calendar.
Okay. Thank you. Um, approval minutes and claims. I'll make a new motion.
We'll make a motion then through the minutes of claims. I'll say.
Okay, roll call.
Ron Sanders, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tim Clark?
Yes.
Joe Caster?
Yes.
Okay, first order of business, I'd like to thank everyone for being here, I know it's kind of a hot issue and a lot of misinformation that needs to be put out and shared, so thank you for being here, let me explain how it's gonna work. Let me get first, let me give you a little history on this, on this project. It started in August ninth of twenty twenty-two. End dot developed a project cost estimate provided proved access of Mountain T State Forest, August of twenty twenty-two. April tenth of twenty twenty-three, Brown County Commissioners and DNR requested approval from the governor to improve Pumpkin Ridge Road to include parking. Didn't see a lot of activity in our files for twenty twenty-four. This year, March of twenty twenty-five, we received the information that was provided previously about the project and supporting documentation. In March and April, End dot project engineer Nick Battin mailed out the notice of survey and, and postcard to residents. And I've heard there's some mix up in communication and who may have gotten what, but those surveys went out and the postcard to residents on attempt to reach everybody. In May twenty-one, we introduced this project to our commissioner meeting, we tabled with the intent to gather more information. On June nineteenth, we had an executive session commissioners with commissioners End dot DNR to discuss a little more detail and understand the history of this project. In July sixteenth, we had another commissioner meeting, we had a presentation by End dot, the DNR project team, there's an eight-minute video, a Q and A session. Decisions proven stable, it's unanimous, the intent is to gather more information so we can hear everybody's perspectives, concerns and issues. And August twentieth, we're here today, we've got a revised draft of the agreement, and we're. I got that yesterday, we made a, made one revision and we'll still continue to look at that to make sure it's gonna be right for us. Yeah, so a lot of work is, we'll start off with the video, of the eight-minute video that was shown in July, and Kevin's gonna give you a presentation on the concept of the project that was, that we received that started back in twenty twenty-two and we received the project for the package this year. Then we'll have a Q and A session, then we'll have public input, so, you know, try to keep it around three minutes, I know some folks may go a little more, if they have a little more history on the project. You know, just kind of keep it civil, it's, it's fact gathering here, information gathering, trying to get your perspective. And going over again, a lot of misinformation, we'll have as many meetings as it's gonna take to get everybody comfortable that we address issues and concerns and we, we arrive at a decision that most everybody can, can accept. And so that can range from do nothing to whatever, to, to deimplementation, so again, no pre-selection by us, it's getting your concerns and getting the input, getting the issues and, and addressing those. So we'll start with the video.
The Mountain T State Forest Access Improvement Project. My name is Nick Battin, and I'm with Crawford with Intelli, the design consultant hired by End dot to complete this project. Today, we will cover these items to help inform you of the project, we will go through introductions of the agencies that are involved in this project, introduce the project team, discuss an overview of the project development process and schedule, bring in the upcoming fieldwork that will occur later this year, and we'll present ways for you to stay involved in the project's development. At the meeting tonight, we have members from multiple divisions from End dot's Seymour District Office, including staff from project management, engineering and design, environmental analysis and real estate. There are also representatives from the DNR's divisions of engineering and forestry. As the project is designed, we will involve input from a number of stakeholders, including various divisions within the Indiana Department of Transportation, divisions within the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Brown County elected officials, representatives from local tourism groups, residents and local citizens, and the business and EMS community. This project will follow End dot's project development process. This begins with project selection, survey and data collection. After that, the needs and purpose of the project will be drafted and environmental studies commence. Various alternatives will be created and screened that satisfy the project needs and purpose to a varying degree. Once a preferred alternative is selected and preliminary design details are known, another public meeting will be held. After that, final design, permitting and land acquisition will occur. The project concludes with construction. This project will also follow End dot's environmental implementation process, known as CIPA, the State Environmental Policy Act. It requires End dot to analyze and evaluate impact of a proposed project to the natural and socioeconomic environment. CIPA is a decision-making process that revolves around the drafting of a purpose and need statement, creation and screening of alternatives, and then selection of a preferred option. Impacts are analyzed, evaluated and described in the environmental document, which will provide answers to such questions as, what are the impacts each alternative may have on the community? Can these impacts be avoided or minimized? And for those that cannot, what can the mitigation be? Here are some examples of items that will be evaluated as part of the environmental document. These include, how much new right-of-way it may need, its impacts to streams, wetlands and floodplains, and nature species, community impacts, environmental justice, as well as influence from the public. A few facts about the Mountain T State Forest. It encompasses over four hundred acres. It was previously owned and managed by the Nature Conservancy and then deeded to the state of Indiana in twenty thirteen, becoming one of the newest state forests in the DNR system. At the time, the state used funds from the UF Forests Pre-Services for its latest deployment to purchase. Along with active forest management by the DNR, the property activities at the state forest today include hunting, off-trail hiking and wildlife dealing. Mountain T State Forest is located in northeastern Brown County, north of State Route forty-six, between Nashville and Columbus. The property is located west of the road and is currently accessed via an unapproved road, known as Pumpkin Ridge Road. The project's need and purpose are really its foundation, the why behind doing this project. Present, assistance to the state forest use and narrow wandering ground rolling lane that has not been publicly maintained for many years. The excess road needs include lack of adequate roadway lift, adequate drainage control and a overdriving surface. The purpose of this project is to improve the roadway condition, provide conveyances for roadside drainage and provide adequate travel weight lift. This project is funded solely by the state of Indiana, there are no federal government funds involved. The project will be managed and constructed by End dot. Showed here is the schedule for the project development. Preliminary design and environmental studies are beginning now, with a goal to have those concluded in July of twenty twenty-six. After that time, land acquisitions and final design and permitting can begin. The project is currently scheduled to bid in July of twenty twenty-seven. A very early estimate of the construction schedule is to start in September of twenty twenty-seven and construction to extend into twenty twenty-nine. The current construction cost estimate for the project is seven million dollars. Listed here are some aspects of the project's scope. It will provide an adequate roadway for the road to the entrance to the state forest. Only about the final two hundred feet of the project will be within the boundary of the state forest itself. The offer is considered, we utilize the existing Pumpkin Ridge Road as much as practical, but to bring it up to even modest design standards will involve deviations. It will provide an asphalt paving surface with roadside ditches and culverts. The design of the project will be for relatively low thirty mile an hour design speed. It's important to note that the project is not striving to build a high-speed state or county road. Its intent is a low-speed runway that helps the train as much as possible, while still meeting the purpose and meaning. Here you will see our dash cam driving westbound on Pumpkin Ridge Road in due location within the project limits. Note how narrow the existing roadway is, the steep hillsides and the poor driving surface. When doing this video, we actually encountered another vehicle coming the other way, and you can see the challenges we're trying to pass. Here's an aerial view of the same area. The current roadway does not meet contemporary standards, even for a low-speed recreational access road today. As you can see, the area is very wooded and the existing roadway has a lot of curves to it that would need to be brought up to modern standards. This image is a basic typical section of what we planned for the roadway. Lane widths are eleven feet with two foot shoulders and roadside addition. These details comply with End dot standards for recreational roads. This project is likely to require additional right-of-way in order to be completed. All land acquisition activities will comply with state laws. We expect appraising to begin in the late summer of twenty twenty-six and then real estate offers will be extended near the end of twenty twenty-six. We do not expect any relocations of residences as part of the project. There are locals available, but here at the meeting tonight, as well on the project website, that discuss the process of land acquisition. It is important for property owners in the protected area to know that there will be a number of fieldwork and surveys occurring in the coming months. All staff in the field will wear a high visibility vest and possess proper identification. The fieldwork will include topographic surveying, which is a mapping of the terrain and features to be used during design. Ecological surveys of the natural environment will occur during the spring rainy season. An archaeology survey will also occur later this year, which involves taking small bits, twenty-four inches into the ground, to chance artifacts. These holes will be refilled with the native soils and then later this year, soil lines will be conducted to better determine the subsurface soil conditions for the presence of rock. Noticeable survey mailers will be sent to property owners before starting these activities.
So I don't know how many people actually had an opportunity to look at the whiteboard that's up there. If you see at the very top, you'll see two images, the one on the left is basically encompassing the area of this Mountain T State Forest, the second is a zoomed-in area that's the impacted area of the Pumpkin Ridge Road. Both of those are highlighted so that you know where the beginning and the end is. To the far right-hand side, that, I love my seventeen drawing there, is basically the, the base or the road expectation as far as grade and what the base material and what heights will need to be achieved in order to put that road in. The boat on the second row in the very bottom left, that is basically a close-in shot of what the expectation is for parking area at the end in the actual state, in the state forest. And then the photographs or those pictures to the left basically are representation or they're a capture of the actual drawings with what would be considered the boundaries, the property lines and what we'd call the construction lines related to this particular project. Now obviously, again, those drawings are drafts. None of the design work has been completed, none of the design work is actually, it's in its phase, like some of you, I think, as property owners have seen people coming out and doing surveys and driving stakes and those kinds of things. If you walk along that path, they do attempt to stay as close to the original road as possible. There are areas where there are wider areas where there are drainage issues and where there is going to be a need to actually pull back and go out wider in the construction, and that's mainly more towards the actual state forest on one side and then across from, I think, Mr. Olmstead or one of the, Mr., I can't remember the other property owner.
Melors on the south side.
Yes, Melors on the south side of that. So, from what you, for those of you who are actual property owners who received that package, one of the letters in there identifies the expected actual land acquisition and is basically estimated around six, I think, six point eight acres is what the original part. So, given that, along that path, that was the, that was the initial proposal of the designs going forward. So, and looking at this, a lot of people ask the question, well, why is that project six million dollars? Well, I can tell you that it takes a lot of effort to move earth because that particular road has very little base on it, from my understanding, and it does have to go through and put in ditches and drainage and culverts and build that base so that it's sustainable, so that it does not give way to, when under pressure and having been paved. So, I'm not an, I'm an engineer, but I'm not a civil engineer, so we do have Nick Batta here, and I'd like to have him come up to the podium, please. So, Nick, can you please go through and identify additional information as it relates to that, that I'm, that may feel as important to the crowd here so they can understand what's going on?
Sure. So, the documents that are posted there and were made available is what End dot often they call a mini-scope. And its primary purpose is to set a budget for a project to see if End dot can program it. It, it sets very basic parameters, project limits, a little bit about some design criteria. At this point in time, no design would have begun, it is based off of aerials, it's based off of a surface tray model that we download off the GIS. You know, you had mentioned design hasn't finished, at that point in time, design hadn't even started, so I just really want to get that clear, it helps us establish a basic footprint for our study limits. I mean, you mentioned the six acres, again, that's just set for budgetary purposes and that will. Since that time, we've gone out and done a topographic survey, and so we've started what I would consider the real design phase, really just the past probably six weeks now. So, to call, I'm not sure I would even call that really a starting point because again, it doesn't have the level of precision behind it that we have now at our disposal, so. But I do want to kind of clarify that. I mean, since that time, we've, we've, we've been working with the survey, we've developing an alternative, and alternatives based off of the design criteria and parameters that I said in the video. There's, there's processes available to us, if, if, if there's feelings that thirty miles an hour is too high or eleven feet is too wide or we need to, even the areas where we are deviating from Pumpkin Ridge Road, we need to kind of get back on the board. Those are all at our disposal and End dot has processes available in order to be able to go below their standards if it's warranted. And those processes require approval by End dot, will require approval by the county as the ultimate owner of the road. I propose them and you all determine whether they're, they're worthwhile or not. So I just can't stress enough that how early we are still in the bays. I can admit that that would be very frustrating for people to live along the road and want to know some of these answers. I, I do try to empathize with that. It just, it takes time, it, it is a big project, especially in challenging trains such as this. And also, we, we can go below End dot standards, but what we do not do is go outside End dot's processes. End dot has this process because it adheres to federal and state regulations. So yes, I can get some going on design and I can give a general opinion on whether we can avoid this or that, but we still have to do an archaeology survey, we still have to do an ecology survey, we still have to get soil voids. All these things are required in order for, for me as the designer to say with really any confidence, yes, we can avoid that, yes, it's five acres or less, it's three acres or whatever. So we do need to get through that and unfortunately, that kind of patience is just needed in projects such as this, so I did want to acknowledge that as well, but I think that's it for, for any kind of clarifying or just kind of highlighting what you said.
Okay. And so John, is John Seepert here? John, you have anything to add? So maybe, I think the last meeting that we actually did, you kind of gave, it's covered in the, the meeting, the video itself as far as needs, but there has a tendency to, to ask questions of, well, that's a lot of money being spent in an area here, so can you highlight again the actual needs that you're trying to accomplish there?
Sure, I'll introduce myself, I'm John Seepert, I'm the director of Division of Forestry. So we manage all the state forests and this is just one of our newest ones. This is probably one of. This is probably one of, obviously the newest ones we have. It has the worst access and we're required to provide access to the public, the public lands. We've had, uh, folks come to us and say, you need to improve the road. Uh, your access is poor. I mean, so we're, we're starting in between, between what some people want us to do and other people don't want us to do. But that's, uh, that's, that was the premise for us to get access to the, to the forest, whether it's paved or whether it's gravel. Uh, again, that's NDOT standards. All we wanted to do is provide adequate access. And we've been maintaining that road and since we required the state forests actually put our own.
Please.
Definitely, please.
You haven't maintained it one day that I've been there. I've been there 10 years. Listen, we have, recant that statement, please.
I, I can't because I know our people have been there. We spent the money. I could show you the receipt.
Porter, if you've got a question, please address the board and then I'll, I'll address your question.
I, I wanted to verify that this morning because our people have been there. So it's not, you know, we were trying to be good citizens to, to curb residents as well as provide access to the, to the state forest. It's for our deeds. It's going to be a primitive recreation opportunity. Uh, we have no intentions of doing any, uh, increased recreation. It's going to be camping, hiking and forest management, which is predominantly what we do on state forests. We're not a state park.
Confirm too. I think one of the other activities is hunting.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Did you say campings?
Yes. It'll be.
I just want to make sure of that.
Yes. It'll be a designated area. We, we have, we have camping on our state forests all across the system.
I mean, trailers, camping trailers.
No.
Let's get back. Are you ready for the public session? We're going to address the Q and A.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you.
Well, for the public discussion, just come to the podium, state your name. Um, kind of keep it around three minutes. I know some may go along, have a little more history. It's kind of be civil and, and, uh,
Hello, Mike. Can you hear me? Is this fine? Okay. My name's Paul Nelson and, uh, I live, uh, at Woodsland Lake, Bee Blossom, but I go to Columbus a lot. So as I go to Columbus many, many times, I swing into the mountain just to take a break and see what's going on there. I did last night, uh, within the last 24 hours. And as you can say, the road was just what you saw in the video and it was in good shape. I mean, I drive a Ford Ranger and I had no problem, but I would have taken my Toyota Corolla and would have bothered me a bit. The road's actually pretty decent check, but it is very narrow. My one question is they're talking about paving it to a two-lane. Are they leading to two-lane standards or to actually have two outlined? Will there be a yellow line on the road? So are people going to be required to stay to the right side or if you're pulling a trailer and there's nobody around, could you run down the middle of the road? Uh, if you have, no way you have room. So that's my question on that and, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the road. It's good if they're ever going to consider taking the road a little bit further into the state forest rather than it just ending at the gate. Uh, because, you know, I'm, I'm getting a little bit older. I, I don't hike as much as I used to, but I do ride a bike. And it would be really nice to be able to ride a bike into the, into the forested area there. But to do that, the road has to go into. My understanding, someone just informed me yesterday that there's a cabin or a house of some sort a few hundred yards past the gate, and I wonder if that could be turned into a shelter house of some kind. Just a thought, but I, I did notice in driving, it would lose a little bit of the, the backwoods flavor in paving it, but I understand it's going to become popular. Uh, and if there's going to be people that are going to be pulling trailers in and out that, now, yesterday, last night was about 7:00 PM. I drove over a road. I drove all the way into the parking area. Sat there for a couple of minutes, turned around, went back. I never saw another car. But I can't say, you know, an hour before there, there might have been six cars. I don't know, but that's my experience with it was. Anyway, that's what my questions are is, uh, mostly uh, the two-lane thing isn't just a designation or will it be required, will we be, we be required to drive as if on a divided two-lane road divided by the yellow? That's my question.
I don't know. So I guess my question, if I can, um, can Nick, can you answer some of those questions? And then obviously the ones that we can't, we'll put on a list and try and get answered for them. If you want me to stay up here with him or if you can break, he's going to sit down. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Uh, so it'll be one lane in each direction. So two-lane road. Um, yes, we will strive for yellow lane or yellow line down the middle of it. Uh, but yeah, it'd be just one lane in each direction.
And then I think to John, I think the second, what she has on the structure of the building, I think you'd mentioned they're going to remove that?
Yes, our plan is to remove the, uh, the old cabin. We were going to try and salvage it. But the problem is electric and water back there pretty much would preclude us making those improvements.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Sherri Mitchell. I'd like to briefly share a community-centered approach to the Mountain Tea Forest Road project. One that respects local values and minimizes disruption. Currently, the road is a narrow, single-lane gravel route that is not maintained by the county. NDOT has proposed upgrading it to a 26-foot-wide paved road with a, with a 30 mile an hour speed limit, which would require new right-of-way acquisitions. This plan risks impacting nearby landowners and altering the rural character that defines Brown County. Our community is already navigating significant challenges. Overtourism is straining local resources. School enrollment is declining. Housing costs are rising. And we have a large senior population that values the peace and slower pace of life here. As a veteran community, we need infrastructure improvements that reflect and respect these realities. I propose the county negotiate with NDOT to propose a more balanced solution. One, maintain a gravel surface while widening the road to two lanes for safety. Two, stay within the existing county right-of-way to avoid additional land acquisitions. Three, incorporate design features that naturally slow traffic and preserve our rural feel. Because this is not a federally funded project, NDOT has the flexibility to adapt to adapt the design. They will cover right-of-way and construction costs, but it's up to the county to advocate for a design that reflects our community's priorities. This approach minimizes disruption for citizens, helps manage future maintenance costs and honors the values that make Brown County unique. I urge the commission to support a negotiation compromise with NDOT. One that improves safety and access without sacrificing the character of our community. Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Elise Trimpy. Um, I'm here today, um, as a resident off of Beesville Road. So I take Hoover a lot to go to Columbus. And so I'm really concerned about the safety of the corner of Hoover, um, connecting to Pumpkin Ridge. I think paving it is going to invite a lot of people to try to take trailers back there, to try to take campers back there. And it's really not safe, that corner. It's a blind turn. It's really sharp. It's really steep. Um, I have had many problems turning that corner throughout the years I've lived here. Um, I'm also concerned about patrolling the road, um, patrolling the forest and the state park. It's very secluded off the main road. Um, our government has already cut funding for our parks and recreational areas and Department of Resources, um, federally and statewide. Um, so who's, who's going to manage this facility as it becomes more popular? Um, I'm also concerned about the price. Um, I think there is an estimate out there of eight million. Uh, okay, seven million. So seven million divided by 10 years, there have to be 700,000 people a year for a, a dollar a person into the, into the park to, I mean, that's wild. Like how many people are actually going to visit this park and what would be the cost per person that visits it in that, in that timeframe? Um, I think it's kind of going to be a lot. Um, the other thing I have a problem with is, uh, it kind of takes away the appeal of the, the state park back there. Um, I think the appeal of that part particularly is the seclusion, the primitive nature, less traffic. Um, and I think paving everything nowadays is not what, what we want anymore. So I think that's really, really all I got.
Great, thank you.
Um, my, my name is John Mueller. Um, I'm at, uh, 2418 Hoover Road and, and 2000 Hoover Road, the two properties. We're bringing them to point of order.
Can you move it just a little bit? We did state that. Thank you.
So my name is John Mueller. Um, I own and plan to retire at 2418 Hoover Road, 2000 Hoover Road. Uh, we currently occupy, uh, our property 4,120 feet of Pumpkin Ridge Road to the south. And, um, the communication I've had on this project is almost zero. We received a card in February. I was made aware prior to that that there was the potential for this, so I was watching out for it. And, uh, postmarked February 24th, we received a card, like some of the other residents, from Mr. Bada. And in that card, the last sentence, if you notice, it says that there will be a spring meeting, public meeting, uh, and that we will be made aware, stay tuned. And we were not. Once we got the card, the card involved, um, NDOT and, and DNR. So I continued to watch those forums, seeing nothing. We didn't understand, um, the connection to the county. And now we do. So then, and I really appreciate Kevin, your comment about, uh, the surveyors and respectfully staying, you know, within, you know, some reasonable boundaries. That would be important and, and it was important to us. So we did observe surveyors. Um, they were outside the boundary, I felt, in the first pass. In the second pass, we found surveyors a half a mile from Hoover Road, uh, excuse me, from Pumpkin Ridge Road at our barn. And those surveyors continued. Now, at first, when I made objection uh, to Nick and, and Derek Potts, uh, from DNR to the overreaching, and I have pictures of this, if anybody would like to see, this is not hyperbole. This, this is fact. The, the comment was it might be for runoff or whatever, you know, even if it was spotting a corner post. Just seems excessive, especially since our property had been surveyed within three to four years and, and posted. There was fresh lines on that property. Then the surveyors continued down the hill, and this is critical, across Hoover Road to the Johnson property, the old Craig Johnson property, uh, next to the birds. Now, I agree with you. I, I, I think you probably expected that. But why would you be hitting marks in those areas? So code, the Indian state code, and it's, it's listed in, uh, the draft document in the second paragraph and third paragraph, uh, states the requirement for road construction into state parks like and state forests, and it ma- makes it very clear. That 22-foot, that road design exceeds Hoover Road. Hoover Road is 18 feet on average. So why would you build, over-design a 22-foot road with two-foot shoulders and swales to connect to a road with a lot more traffic? Not to that standard. So my father always told me when something doesn't seem right, it usually isn't. So what's next? To me, it's clear what's next. There was overreaching on the surveyor, survey, and they wanted to take a look ahead. I don't trust what's going on here. I'm sorry. Let's take a step back and take a 10,000-foot view of what happened in, in, since I've observing, observed DNR's changes with regard to this forest. And I think we can start to draw lines of correlation. First, the name change. Yellowwood to Mountain Tea. Second, the first set of, of signage directing traffic to that area. Then another round of signage is robust. A blind person could find Mountain Tea, I think, from, from Highway 46. Then we get the, the note. Um, and in my opinion, it's been intentionally, um, quiet and non-transparent. They want to, they want to bulldoze this project through, and I completely object to it. I do not object to improving the road for the residents back there. Not for access to the, to primarily to the state forest. Yes, that's great. But for the residents, now, I'm going to tell you right now, that road in particular, past the turnoff up, is in the best shape it's been right now. I wrote, I drove it today and I agree. It was in nice shape. It was in nice shape today. But that's not how it's looked. It has not been maintained for the record. As someone who lives off of that and is on that, we have two gates accessing that road. And it, it is atrocious. Now, the section from Hoover up to the tunnels to the top of the hill is decent because they're grading it on a regular basis. Not DNR, not the county, but the residents are. Um, it has not been maintained in the back parking area. But you can fit, if you park smart, you can pit, you can fit six or eight vehicles back there. And during hunting season and morel season, you see a lot of people and you see occasional hawk hikers. They dump their trash, they crap back there. Um, and my wife and I go back and pick, pick things up. Uh, but it's, it's disgusting. Um, so it hasn't been, been maintained. So why all the attention now? Um, that's, that's my concern. So I, I think there's more to this. I will, I would also, in closing, the last statement I'd like to make, on that state code, on the second paragraph, there's section C. And section C, I think, is a wise provision that was put in to stop madness. And you three people are capable of stopping this madness. Improve the road for the residents, but stop whatever else is associated with this before this meeting gets a whole lot bigger. Thank you.
Nick, something you'd like to address and, you know, just kind of.
Well, just to clear up, you know, the, the offering of a public information meeting in hopes that would have been last spring, which certainly was the case. Um, it was decided to, to, to wait until this agreement was signed before actually hosting the public information meeting. So that's why it hasn't been held yet. That is why we have this video already prepared. And as I said at the meeting last month, I mean, it is still fully our intention to hold said public information meeting and that, that has not changed.
Hello, my name is Mark Cromer. My father lives, um, I'm the first residence on Mountain Tea or Pumpkin Ridge Road. I have two letters here, one from my father and one from my brother. And I will, um, start with my father's. So, dear commissioners, I, Eric Olmstead, a resident and homeowner in Brown County, am writing to strongly oppose the proposed widening and paving of the gravel road near my property at 7276 Pumpkin Ridge Road. This project directly threatens the quiet natural environment that my family and I have cherished for generations. The expansion would endanger not only my property, but also the pond and surrounding ecosystem that serve as a vital habitat for local wildlife. At this time, I am also battling serious health issues. The added stress of this project and the uncertainty of brains has placed an overwhelming, overwhelming burden on me, my family. It is unacceptable that such a disruptive plan is being pursued without proper consideration of its effects on local residents and the environment. Furthermore, this plan has been part of the Olmstead family heritage for over a century. To see it threatened by unnecessary government action is devastating. This is not simply about land. It is about protecting the legacy of. I respectfully request that the board consider this project, all any efforts to advance it and ensure the independent studies, proper engineering reports, and transparent public input are carried out before any further steps are taken. Sincerely, Eric Olstead. Just one more from my brother.
Dear Commissioners, my name is Braden Olstead. I am writing to you as the future heir of the Olstead family property at 7276 Pumpkin Ridge Road. For nearly a century, my family has cherished this land, and it is my hope to continue that legacy. The proposed roadway expansion not only threatens to take away a significant portion of our land, but it also threatens to erase a piece of our family's history. This land has been passed down from my great-grandfather to my father, Eric Olstead, and not to me. Losing it is an unnecessary and oversized road project would nearly be a part of who we are. I urge you to consider the deep personal and historical significance of our property. It is not just a piece of land, it is a part of our family's heritage and a place for peace and tranquility, that I hope to preserve for future generations. Thank you for your time and consider it. You see, Braden Olstead. That is all I have for this time.
Great, thank you.
My name is Benita Fox. I just want to ask, do they have any idea of the 6.8 acres of land acquisition of what property that is?
So if you look at the drawings up there where the construction lines are, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and Nick can confirm in those original drawings, what falls within that yellow line is the estimate and what was originally prepared, I believe, in my reckoning?
Yeah, but again, I just cannot reiterate enough. It is based for budgetary only, it is based off of not even what I would call design, it is conceptual and best. And it's also usually, we started out a little conservative, because we like to kind of overspend in these areas, which gives us flexibility to develop alternatives and to avoid natural features and the like that we know are going to be out there that we're going to do. So I can't stress that enough, but it is what we did to establish a budget for this project, was the six acres.
I have one or a couple of questions. I drive back to Mount, I'm Joyce Sawyer. I'm a Brown County resident. I've driven back to Mountain T Park. It's beautiful back there, and what's beautiful is the nice dirt road, which we're losing all of in Brown County. That's part of what makes it Brown County. But I would like to point out that if you widen that road to a huge wide road, you're going to have to widen Hoover. Hoover is dangerous enough when somebody comes around a curve. So is the county going to take on the cost of widening Hoover once you have things like horse trailers going back that road? And are you going to put the facilities back there? I understand there's a question of that being turned into a horse-riding place, and I did grow up on a horse farm, so I like horses. But if you're going to have a place for horses, you need water. So are we going to run a town water line back there? And if you're going to have people back there, you better have bathrooms, because otherwise they will mess beside trees and make it really bad for other people who try to come to the park. So are you going to be taking care of putting bathrooms back there? And if so, who's maintaining them? You know, when you go to Yellowwood State Forest, there are facilities and water and things like that. People will assume that unless you put up a big sign. I'll offer to personally write one. No facilities, no dumping, take it with you when you leave. And people don't take it with them when they leave. So I'd just like to point out that you're putting a lot of really bad things out there. It will turn into just a high school kids' party place, okay? That's really what it's going to do. And I would also like to know, was this donated from a land trust? Is that how the state acquired this? Nature Conservancy. Nature Conservancy, okay. Isn't land usually donated to places like the Nature Conservancy to preserve the land and to preserve hundreds of acres of old forest? And inviting a wide road and trailers back there is not a way to preserve it. I would bet this violates the original terms of that land being donated to the Nature Conservancy, and I just thought of that this afternoon talking to a lawyer friend, so I'm going to be looking into that.
Thank you.
My name is Kristy Grandall, I'm a county resident. And I think it says, interesting, Mr. Banta said that it will have forest management. And this happened previously when they improved the road at Yellowwood State Forest. They've logged vast areas within Yellowwood. Of course, you can't see it from the road, they've done it so it's not visible easily to the public unless you hike in or fly over. So I have a serious question, if a 20-foot wide paved road is necessary for logging trucks? And that is part of forest management, correct, Mr. Banta?
That is what the definition of forest management is.
So, you know, my concern is that this paved road within, well, there've been several state government policy changes over the last 10 years with proposals to make forests and parks pay for themselves by logging them. And so my concern is that this is a precursor to vast amounts of logging where the public won't see it. And that's what's happened in Yellowwood, so.
Thank you.
On the legal issue, sir?
Yes, you're correct. It was the Nature Conservancy originally acquired the land from a timber company who put it together. We purchased it, paid for it as well, was that given to us? The question of, the Nature Conservancy, under their ownership, had already done timber harvests before we had ever touched the place. So, I mean, we're just continuing on what they have done, what we've done sustainably for the last 120 years on state forest land.
So is that, we are going logging?
Yes, it is part of our system. It would be yes.
Mr. can I ask a question, Ted Jack?
Yeah. Come and follow me, please.
I was at Morgan Monroe Open House in the fall, and they stated that there would be a controlled burn coming up in Mountain T, is that correct?
That's correct. So a controlled burn is the prelude to a timber harvest. It could be any time.
It could be, yes. And that controlled burn has already taken place.
Yes. Hello, I'm Beth Mullery, county resident, and I have family on Pumpkin Ridge Road, grew up on Hoover Road, familiar with the area. I have a few questions. I did send questions up to the commissioners prior to this meeting, and I've been kind of checking them off. There's a few things that I would like to address. One being, would the state consider, and you guys consider, a restriction on this agreement that would prohibit Mountain T from becoming an ATV, UTV off-road park? The state currently has a 1,400, right around a 1,400-acre off-road park in Litton, Indiana, which I personally rode. We have a razor sitting in our garage. No way, shape, form do I want Mountain T to ever become an ATV, UTV park. And that's one thing that I would like for you guys to think about. Could it be, if you guys are going to go into a contract with the state on this, can that be a contingency? And, you know, they might even think, do we want horses back there? Do we want to maintain this as a small hiking primitive area? If we're doing that, we don't need the road scope that is currently under design or consideration. And what, if I understand, the current contact I saw essentially gave the state eminent domain rights. I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that there has been a modification to that, that eminent domain would need to be approved by the commissioners, is that correct? That it's been modified to that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So what is it worth to you guys? What would we need back there that would make you guys go to eminent domain to take property to put this road back there? You don't have to answer that today to me, it's just a question posed to you. And do you guys have the ability, if you do sign this contract that's proposed to you, do you have stopping power? Can you put the brakes on this once you start signing a contract with them? And my final point is, being former county auditor of Brown County, I'm aware of the financial constraints that this county runs under. And I've sat through many meetings, and I've listened to us trying to find money to pave the current roads that we have, to maintain them, to buy salt, to do everything that we need to do to maintain our roads. So, and I am aware that if we take on another road, or bring this back into our maintained inventory, to be more clear, that we would get a little bit more money from the state. Is that enough to offset the potential cost to the county? We've been going to the state legislatures for decades, trying to get some revenue from this property owned by the state that is currently off of our tax rolls. We have been unsuccessful to get anything from the gate piece to the Brown County State Park. And so if they come in now and offer us $7 million to create a road that we may not need, and then we take on the responsibility to maintain that road, we're not only taking on the responsibility to maintain the road, the ditching, the resurfacing that will eventually come with it, we're also going to provide enhanced law enforcement services to it. Our EMS providers are going to be back there more and more, and we're already running into the state parks and international forests. So we're going to stretch our financial burden even more when we do this. I'm not saying that it's something that shouldn't happen, you know, I'm not saying that we should not improve the access to Mountain T. I don't want that construed. I think we need to operate, as Sherri said, in a manner that balances the needs of the residents, the wants of the residents, the impact of the people who live on Pumpkin Ridge Road and are affected by it in near proximity, along with the financial constraints that we're willing to take on as a care. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Hi, I'm Jason Dickmeyer, I live on Pumpkin Ridge Road. I have one of the properties that will be affected. First and foremost, I want to thank Ron for shutting up at the house and letting us know that this was happening, because there wasn't much communication that was.
Y'all putting up with me.
I just want to put the sides into perspective. Over the weekend, we were down in the south end of the county, and I took a tape measure with me. So I got to measure some of your county roads. So I measured Beck's Grove Road, it's only 17 foot, 8 inches. Measured Harrisonburg Road, also 17 foot. Bellsville Pike, I measured it in between two aprons for driveway, so it's a little bit wide right there, and it was 19 foot. Measured Valley Branch, it was 18 foot. Mount Liberty is 18 foot, who rode 19-foot places. But here's something else, I measured State Road 135, Indiana State Road 135, in two different places. Both of those measurements were 20 foot and then some change. So the pavement that they're wanting to put down is 26 feet wide. I don't know, I'm 5'10", but this is astronomical, that they want to, basically, this is the narrowest road in the county as they're writing it in places, and they want to go to the extreme and make it the widest, all with the stroke of a pen. Let's see. Oh, one question I have is, so I seen there was a change to the agenda, and that the county asked for something to be changed. What was that something that was changed?
The president of the board changed the agenda to identify that we weren't making a decision, that we just got the contract, and we're going to open it up for public discussion and comment.
All right. So this counts as our public meeting then?
No.
This is?
This is a public meeting.
So we two got the letter in the mail in February, and yeah, I just want to reiterate that it said that we would have a public meeting in the spring, and this is not spring anymore.
So point of order, Mr. Wilson? Yes. I just want to reiterate that Nick did basically say that the readings have not occurred on the schedule, but they've been contingent upon this contract being put forth for the commissioners. So we've taken this from the schedule since it was initially in place, and the first engagement with them in March of this year. So it's been a long process and engagement with both DNR, with NDOT, and with CMT.
So it sounds like we're wanting to push the public meetings until after the contract's signed, which is whether we should be skipping processes.
There you are. Well, that's not, that's not true. We haven't signed anything. We haven't scheduled.
We just got the final version of this contract yesterday.
We have no intention of fast-tracking the contract. We've already went back with the change. Here in the comments, we may consider the other changes. I think Beth mentioned a couple of things. So there's no pre-selected decision, but that's why we're having meetings. So we need to have more meetings to work through the issues that you guys write, we'll do that. We need to have, and we'll have those more meetings.
This is not a state meeting, no. This is a commissioner meeting, and at some point, the state will have their meeting. The state meeting would come after the signing of the contract, or would you have a meeting with them before? Sir?
Right, that was my.
Yeah, Nick, do you want to add something?
Not sure, I was totally following that, but I'll give it a try. I mean, if and when the agreement is signed, we would then schedule and advertise a public information meeting that we've always planned. Usually we do that in the neighborhood of three to four weeks in advance.
Okay, so it says, if we sign the contract, then your process begins?
The public information meeting will be scheduled. I mean, obviously, we've started some other aspects of the project, but the idea being that way, everybody's on the same page with what the county's position is on the project and the future ownership, knowing that that was going to be a hot question at the public information meeting, we wanted that resolved in the morning.
How will you notify the stakeholders on the regular that meeting in advance?
Yeah, go ahead and answer, Nick.
Why are you speaking?
So, I mean, we will, any public information meeting, we will always send letters directly to property owners in the project area directly. We'll also, we do the postcards too, the little broader areas, they're easy to do. And then there'll be advertisements and social media postings as well.
That was a problem this time around, so whatever glitch was, we'll probably deeper define and make a little better.
Absolutely. Obviously, you're collecting a lot of names here at these past couple of meetings that would be perfect for our list.
We need to have the correct address to send information to. So it's probably, we'd work with him and give him that, the address that, are you mailing post office, whatever you're using to get your mail check on, that's what we need to find line to get.
Okay. Well, it's your property records on your GIS ought to reflect your current address, that's kind of what they grow from. So wherever your property builds are going, whatever address you have on those records, that'll be updated if they're not correct. So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to bring up another point of the surveyors that was surveying. The video we just watched said that everyone would have a nice fancy vest on, but I got a picture of one that's 250 foot off the road and he don't have no vest on. So it just proved that they can't be trusted, they just make up their own stuff. I'd appreciate it if we actually followed the rules, that'd be great.
Making shots. Yeah, that's amazing.
I just want to follow up. One, my neighbor to my east has asked me to give this to you guys. This is an email that you received today. He is in opposition, he just wants to make it aware, because he can't be here tonight. So I'm going to bring these to you, and then I'm going to take a seat.
Is it possible to get a copy? Is it possible to get a copy of the current agreement, the proposed agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and where do we get that from?
We have any other to? I can get you one.
We have it on the, I'll get, I can get you one after the meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
So. So I would recommend that we basically post it in the section where we basically introduce the documents area.
Yeah, that's better, that's a better solution.
On the county's website?
On Brown County website, county commissioners, it has documents, post it there, that way.
I'm not sure, but if the county would not sign the agreement, does the state have the ability to move forward in any way there?
Nick or DNR, anybody can address that?
Are you ever, Mike, okay?
Well, their project, personally.
Okay. Never mind.
This was somebody that was going to speak on that.
Yeah, would you mind addressing the question? Thank you.
I'm Joy Cole Glaser. I'm proud to pleasure for this project. If there's a signed agreement, the project will not be able to go.
Okay.
My name's Chris Tuttle, number 7176 Pumpkin Ridge Road. Two days ago, just last week, we were given notice that this was going to go on, and it was done in person. I'm thankful to the individual that did that from the community. I don't think I've met anyone in this room yet that ever told me that they knew of this meeting that was going to transpire, other than maybe one person that shared that information and made sure that a group of people from the county reached out to us. So it starts off automatically as a nefarious endeavor with intentions that are, that will drastically affect this community, when yet they're trying to present it as something else on their veil. The wife and I decided that we would approach this as calmly as possible to aid in keeping the motions in check. I'm doing that now as I speak to you, not for what I've written, but from the heart. Been here 10 years, listening to some of these comments that I've heard, especially on the state where they say they maintain, they probably have, they probably do have invoices, and money spent has where my driveway would start. There are things because of our address, again, speaking outside of what I've written, and I'll make sure, try to stay under this three minutes, or whatever the goal would be. But there are some thoughts that come up because of some of the things that have been mentioned here in the, this meeting so far, that would make me ask further questions, such as, are they going to turn right and come up the hill? Are they turning right on Pumpkin Ridge Road because I have that address? Are they going to turn right instead of just going straight back to the state? And blacktop, all that stuff that's back towards us. When the trees fall, is Ann and Chris Tuttle responsible for moving the trees like I have been for the last decade of my life? I pulled dozens of people out in the middle of winter that come and knock on my door, crying, begging to have assistance, getting pulled out. I'm not opposed to change. And again, folks, I'll remind you, it's not, got nothing to do with what I've written. But these emotions and comments come to me off my hips setting in here, knowing that once you get the state permission, remember, you're all public servants. You guys are here because we put you in office. We were told, especially Mr. Clark, I not depend on you, but you had a longing to. You were always the person in the, in the community that would stand on the ground for rights of the people. That's not being done here. This is something that, once you let them in, when you let the wolf into the chicken inn, or the chicken house, they go astray. Everything gets a lot, and it gets rather rough. So I say to you before I get upset and started, say anything that I definitely would be upset about later on. I think that the scope of the project is out of order. I think that it's a matter of six and a half million dollars if we're lucky. We all know how the contracts work, we all know how construction works, and things can get out of control, and they're very expensive. But they don't need that kind of money for this kind of project. It sounds like there's nefarious intent here behind that, trying to be hidden. And I hope that the, the community is now starting to realize that if we give them an inch, they take a foot. And that's all they've done this day for years, and I think that's enough for my hip. I stand before you today, not just as a homeowner, but as a steward of the land and voice for our community. We are gathered here because we believe the purpose to widen and pave Pumpkin Ridge Road in its current oversized form is not only unnecessary, but harmful to the way of life, our environment, and our future. For decades, family like, families like ours have lived alongside this gravel road, maintaining it at our own expense and cherishing the peace and beauty that it provides. This road is more than just a stretch of gravel, it's a part of the character of our community, part of the forest, and part of the sanctuary we have chosen for our lives. We want to make clear, we are not opposed to improvements. If the county wishes to assist with modest upgrades such as simple grading, drainage, or maintenance, we would welcome that. But the current proposal calls for a footprint far, far beyond what is necessary. It would create a commercial-style roadway that does not fit the character of our quiet forest community. It threatens to replace natural beauty with asphalt, noise, speed, and unwanted traffic. This is not progress, this is disruption. As taxpayers, we also demand accountability. Public funds must be used responsibly, not wasted on inflated projects that benefits no one in the community. Before even considering such a drastic change, proper reports, environmental studies, and community input must be completed. None of that has been done as of yet. We have the right to transparency and to be part of the decisions that directly impact our lives and property. There are also environmental concerns. No assessments have been made of the endangered species and fragile ecosystems in the forest. Moving forward without those studies would be reckless and irresponsible. We have a duty, not just to ourselves, but to the land, the wildlife, and the generations that will come after us. We respectfully urge the council, scale this project back. Keep Pumpkin Ridge Road in harmony with the community that loves and maintains it. Invest taxpayer dollars where they are truly needed, not here where the people most affected are united in opposition to an oversized plan. That's what I have written, and as I do that, more thoughts come to mind, and I think tonight's first meeting, far as I know, it's my first meeting to be involved with, but if it wasn't, we're some of the interests in this community. Most of these people would not know what has been done, what is being considered, and the potential harm that is right at our fingertips. I bring all this and point it to you, folks. You are already public servants. We put you here to protect our interest. The future of my grandchildren, and whether or not they have something beautiful to go look at the way my wife and I do today, all determines on what you guys choose to do here as an American state national, one of the first in this part of the state. I stand hold to my rights, and I stick to the constitution and try to run my life as righteous as possible. You folks have a duty not to represent the corporations that constantly smash our rights as Americans in this country, but you have a duty to stand for the rights of not just the constitution, the state constitution more importantly, but yet to our community that put you in these offices. We all went to, we all went to an area to pick and choose who we wanted to put in these offices to represent us, to be our voice. I'm asking everyone to reconsider your decisions on this. You cannot open that chicken hen house gate, because if you do, the state will run awry. That's what they do. It is not a big deal for the county to handle this particular property on its own. We have come to this community many a times within my background with regards to being able to show different counties how to obtain federal funding. Not one time in 10 years has been brought up for us to do that, but I speak all the time at all these different places. DNR agents in the past used to take courses for educational purposes, for native plantings and things of that nature. I've spoken many a times in a court of law, speaking on subject matters such as this, assisting DNR the entire time, allowing them and the communities to grow stronger, working as a team or a working team member, to be part of those communities, showing them how the citizens can, or the residents of those areas in different counties can use strengths that the DNR, its stage, state legislator, and organizations all can gather, the ability to have and execute things like this that you guys are creating. I did, we want more tax dollars. Most counties have that same problem, but we're in a position right now that if you let go of what you have as control currently, it could be devastating this community, it wouldn't be beneficial. So in final statement, I would say this, you were chosen by the people for the most important job that our community has. And I think that if you just nonchalantly agree to the terms of this thing, then you're being no better than those that are in Washington that don't really come to the people for their questions. They rule with an iron fist, and that's not what many of you guys grant for. We all voted for folks to be here because we all have hearts, and we thought you folks did too, and I believe that some of you still do. I don't think that this is necessarily an attempt to steamroll, but it gives the impression that that's what's going on. So I beg of you, reconsider what you're doing, make sure that we have appropriate opportunity to speak so that everything is laid out and thorough, so that there is none of this nefarious thought in my mind. Because if you do decide it, I would at least like to be able to at least sit back on my property and go, you know, we were part of that, we voiced our opinion, but when it was all said and done, this was right, or this was wrong. And I'm glad to see we could all come to a meeting of the minds and a, and a final outcome for it that tried to benefit all parties involved. Just because it's a six and a half million dollar potential for basically a little bit more of a better road, you know, the erosion control, no one's really spoken of that. It's out of control. The damage to the blacktop, all taxpayer dollars paid for that constantly, and all of that keeps happening, and I don't see the county really pointing out the federal funding to get anything. But yet, when it comes to erosion control, you guys also always talk about the waste water management, massive ways to get tens of millions of dollars brought into this community and not have headache issues that pop up like this, where you have to feel kind of forced to breathe it in just to have. So I'd just like to end with that, let everyone know that I apologize for being so long, and I'm truly thankful for those who spoke up and told us that this meeting was happening. I'm not real happy with the fact you guys have chosen to postpone your vote or things of that nature, because that also continues to give the idea that, are you going to do such behind closed doors? So that's what some of us are concerned about. If you could address that and how you would function that way, I appreciate it.
All right, Chris, thank you. Let me ask a question. And it's, I address a process question to Nick. As we understand this process as we're learning, we kind of inherited this, and we hear in the documents, your process, basically, the way you outlined it, is, is the commissioners would sign off on the agreement, then your work will start. Was that, was that the assumption?
I mean, no, not necessarily. I mean, we have started, because again, the survey's complete, and we have started some of our early design. The, the public information meeting is the one thing that we have delayed for the agreement.
So when we, so the expectation or the assumption of the process laws, we've signed an agreement, you would start the process, you'd have the public meetings, then you would start working the finalization of your plans?
Well, I mean, it would, it would begin in earnest, I would say. I mean, you know, with, with the idea sometime, you know, next year, next spring probably, maybe even in the summer, you know, we would be able to present a lot of the, you know, what is the exact right-of-way footprint of this project going to be, what are really the impacts? You know, as, as the gentleman just said, I mean, we have a lot of environmental studies we still have to do in order to comply with state and federal law.
But you're not going to do that until you get a signed contract, right? Or a signed agreement?
That's right, yes. Yeah, we're, we're, we need to keep it on schedule because the money is tied to a state fiscal year, and if you don't get it completed in that fiscal year, then the money will go away. But we are trying to be respectful of the fact that this is a very important milestone, and we're not, we don't want to get ahead of it either.
Okay. I, I gotta ask a question right there. Are you saying, you're asking the community?
Point it or let them, let them finish, and then we bring you up.
I'm asking, I'm asking you.
Well, you ask, you ask the chair, and then, and then you. Go back to the podium then, ask the question so they can hear you on the, on the audio. You can't hear people from the audience when you're speaking out, so just, just go to the podium and. Ask your question.
All right. I, I'm asking you, and I guess that was, as they directed, are you saying, please sign this contract that determines most of this, but we're going to get it figured out later? Because that's important to me to know whether or not you're asking me to come work on your house and, and handle the situation versus doing it later and giving us the de shell plate, that's what's concerning.
Yeah. I mean, we, we need the agreement signed in order to be able to, to get going with a lot of these early studies, to then be able to help get to some of the decisions and, and the information that people are asking about. And I, I, I have not seen the agreement because I'm not a party to the agreement, because I'm, I'm the design consultant. I assume there's terms in the agreement about how NDOT and the county will work together on the project, but we, we do need the agreement in order to get started on a lot of these, these riddles, these, these things that people are asking about in order to really get answers to them.
Okay.
Well, is there additional contracts that would come later? Is there an additional contract that would come later, or is this the final contract? All that they need to make those things.
They need us to sign an agreement.
Yes, sir.
We're not going to sign an agreement tonight. That was never the intent for us to sign an agreement.
The question is, are there additional contracts or agreements that'll come later that would change any of the input or outcome of tonight?
There's no, there's no, no more agreement. That's the only agreement, because the road is not belong to the state, it's belong to the county only. So that's why we need to have the agreement, make sure we can work all that, that we need to do with the work on there. But there's no additional.
I think you said it best, and what they've told us all, folks, is if you accept this, I apologize. If you guys, if you guys sign this contract that they've permitted, there isn't anything else, the community don't get a chance to speak more, you can have all the hearings you want, but guess what, it's going to go down. None of us could stop it anyhow.
Okay, let me, thank you. Let me just reinforce it. The issue in, in the processes we're inherited is, is, is when, is the communication I'm notifying, because this thing, as I mentioned, it was started in 2022. Commissioners at the time, a couple years ago, signed a agreement with the governor and started the ball. The initial communication with the landowners, with the survey, the stakes, and you had the, and the cards, fine, I think the intent was to address, send those out to the addresses, they didn't make it to everybody. And so, and then when we got the contract, we looked at that, we had our attorney review it. Then we, you signed the new contract, we had our attorney look at it, we made some initial changes. But before, before we kick, before we even consider, consider any kind of agreement, I mean, we're going to have a lot more public meetings. You identified the scope that they were talking about, I think Sherri mentioned the scope, somebody else mentioned, gee, can we do gravel, do we do a narrow road, can we relax those requirements? And so those, for us, as I understand, I'd like to have as many of those details worked out before it even gets to you. I don't think, I don't think you'd ever get a, a, two votes on that agreement from us. I mean, Ron and I already voted twice not to accept an agreement because we didn't think it was ready yet. And so when we talk, now that I understand the process and how this thing works and what your responsibilities are going forward, that's risk to us, our responsibility is to make sure we get those requirements and get an agreement among the, the community as to what the right solution for that is going to be for us. And so that takes, I don't know how many meetings that's going to take, but we'll spend the time. We would have known that, started about two or three years ago, we'd probably be much farther ahead, so we just got this in March, so we didn't know, and we're learning the process and the communication, thank God. We need to have a better method for at least the commissioners on getting, getting information out to you, and we'll test that to make sure you have these meetings. But it's been on our agenda, and will be on our agenda for every, for every commissioner meeting, so stay tuned and people get it. So let me summarize. We initially got the contract, the idea was, go ahead and sign this so that they can start working through final plans. Um, we initially got the contract. The idea was go ahead and sign this so that they can start working through final plans. We said no to that. Then we find out that gee whiz, the communication process didn't work. We'll fix that. Um, so now the ball's in our court to go through and get what that scope of project's going to be. And so we'll work the communication thing to make sure. You know, all the residents, you know, Pumpkin Ridge Road are there and then hopefully in the paper, other people who want to come in. And, and that voice is heard. So whatever that's going to take. So when we assign an agreement. And then I'm not quite sure when we went through the agreement, Kevin and I both have a pretty extensive background in project management. We're kind of curious on, on lining up the contract with your process. So when we go through, all of a sudden, we think we're going to get this answer and then all of a sudden, oops, you know, we had to go a different way. I want to know what that possible oops would be. When tried to call a risk. And the one thing that we did during the contract, we changed. I asked when it got to NDOT number fourteen. Um, NDOT shall provide right away plans to the LPA for their review and input prior to initiating land acquisition services. We changed that when it said for review and input. We, and we put parentheses and approval. So if it gets to that point where it gets to the eminent domain, we didn't, we didn't delegate that responsibility to the, to the state. It's ours. And so the other thing we want to do is we walk through this process of taking your requirements and making sure they integrate through here. As they go through these steps, have these public meetings, we reinforce that. We look for those risks where that deviation for what you thought you were going to get is going to vary. And, and, and we, and we fix that. But I want to know before I sign the contract. Where in that decision-making cycles, we go through the process that we can say, hey, timeout, that's not what we're thinking. And if it's too big of a change of scope, we'll do kind of a timeout and address it. But I want to make sure we have that power. That power is part of that process. I mean, it's like. We want. A, a, a clear picture of what we're getting into when we sign that thing and what your processes will have decision points and educate you folks on what we're going to go through. So it's very transparent. Here's the process. You know, we'll have it on the agenda, I would think, for every meeting that we have. So there's not going to be any surprises. We're not doing anything in a vacuum. Um, and I said. It's not going to be in vacuum. You're going to know. And so we'll go through that. So by the time we get through that, we've got that buying into the community. And, you know, doing nothing is always an option. If, if that's, that's where it goes, but, but. If that's where it goes, if that's the right solution for us. But again, it's addressing all your issues. And, and, and providing a, a mitigation strategy, we need to, but at least identify and document that. And a big part of that that you don't see is we go through this process is, is risk. What can go wrong? And if it does, what's the effect? And then what, how do we mitigate that? So I don't want any surprises when I go through this, this process. So you're happy, we're happy, you guys are happy and, and we're not, we're not, uh. You know, we're happy with the end result and, and people are buying in and that's going to prevent a lot of conflict, a lot of angst. And as, as much as we need to communicate, we'll communicate, but, but don't just. Every meeting will be on the agenda. There's not going to be any surprises. That gives you some shirts, yeah.
That was, that, that was great. Um, that was great. Can we add to the, what you said in this process? This, what you described as a slowdown process, which is needed, right? Can you add to that? Options. We were given an ottoman, a four thousand foot highway as a single option. You can't tell me that situationally, that's ridiculous, that it's, that's not ridiculous. What are our options? Is a wide gravel road? Is a, is a scaled down? Uh, asphalt road an option? They, they need, the residents, and I'm not, I don't, I don't access that route from our property. Uh, not, not to our dwellings, but they need something. So what are the options? Or is this an all or nothing?
No, it's not going to be an all or nothing. It would be a nothing. Um, I think they already identified they could relax the, uh, NDOT requirements. On, on, on different aspects of that. I'd like to know what those, what that range is. And, and we've talked about on the gravel thing, I'd like to know what that range. And then it's like, okay, if you do gravel, I think, as you said, most part is the, the, the building, the bed is the most expensive thing. The paving is inexpensive. So. What's that look like? And so I'd like to have that range of options. It's like. I just do so you know. So we have that range, yeah.
Um, my name is Maria Cromer. One more time, I just wanted to speak for myself this time. Um, I grew up on Pumpkin Ridge. I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm not opposed to improvements. Um, I think that'd be really nice. We're not opposed to people being back there. We do like it being secluded, um. Uh, really sensitive topic for me. I was going to try to get through it. I am concerned about the paving. I don't see why there's a need for that. There's lots of roads in Brown County. That really need it. Grandma Barnes Road, it's a mess. I mean, I've seen people online pleading for help. We can't find a way to get it paved. I drove down it recently just because I like to go back roading. And I will never take my car down that road, ever, until it is fixed. Um. Some of my favorite things to do are to go, um, down south into Elkinsville and to explore the Browning Mountain area. Those are gravel roads. People seem to be having a pretty fun, easy time just getting back there. I don't see. A whole lot of, um, need for paving. They maintain it well. A lot nicer than Grandma Barnes Road. Um. Another thing I'm concerned with is if you pave. The road next to my dad's lake. How will that be treated during the winter for snow and ice? Will they be using salt? Um. Salts are not good when they run off into your water. Kills fish. Can cause algae blooms, um, many other problems. And it is directly on, on the road right now. My father's lake is directly on the road. I'm worried about his water supply. That is his only water supply. Um, if the lake were to be. Um, maybe if they had to make room for this road and some of the lake had to be removed or, um. You know, smaller. He, his water supply would be greatly affected. That, that worries me. And also, I worry about the runoff that could cause the streams down Hoover, the flood, um. My family lives all up and down Hoover Road. And every year, it seems like the floods are getting worse. Um, probably two, one hundred year floods in the last ten years. I lost a cousin in one of those floods. It was really bad. Um, the water nearly reached some of our homes. And I'm just concerned what adding anything could do because Mount E or Pumpkin Ridge is one of the highest points and everything does run down from there. Um. We also know that cars can create some pollution, which can damage the ecosystems. I do worry about that and, um, the endangered rattlesnakes. They said that they are intending to log back there and also if they were in ATV park. That would be detrimental to their home, their environment. See how that is, um. Helping, there's. Supposed to be protected. We just feel like, um. We've always done our best to protect them. They would come up to his house, my dad's house. And, um, we would contact like. Our DNR, they would take them to the nature center and ship them. And release them. That way they could track where they've been for. And they would come back to Pumpkin Ridge. There's power lines back there and they have a huge dam. I'm just really concerned because, um, we've always just really cared for them. They don't deserve to die just because they're snakes.
Thank you. You know, uh, the preliminary plans, when, when we sign the agreement, we're trying to identify as many of your concerns that we can and get agreement on those things. Because that passes over to the state, we'll monitor that as we go through to, to make sure, you know, those concerns are addressed in the plan. Because we're not doing the, what is it? The, uh, archaeological digs and the environmental digs. That's. Once we sign the contract, then there's money to address the issues we've identified, kind of like call it our preliminary plan. So, but like a two-phase process, we're trying to incorporate as many of those things you can. So when you, before we sign anything, at least you say, yep, that's my thing.
Okay.
That's my thing. That's my concern. That's what I said at the meeting. We have that documented. We have it identified. And then when we go through on the execution of the contract and the plan, then we monitor those kinds of things we'll go through. And give people an update that, hey, we're on track of this or, or maybe we're not. And then we've looked at, how do we address that? We have no problem. So. That's, that's the process. That's the intent of the process going forward. Don't want anybody surprised when we get through this.
Well, we do want transparency in this matter. Um, I feel like we have felt like maybe there wasn't, um, a whole lot of transparency until now. What we're hoping for today is answered, um.
But we did, I did fire a communication problem.
Yeah. We found out about the meeting here.
Yeah.
We're here today. One more thing I'd just like to ask, um, if you guys are doing a huge project, but in this paved road, it's the only way in and out. How would these residents be able to leave to the, the main road? Like, how will they get to Hoover Road? If the whole road is dug up or there are machines up in mountainous roads? My dad has medical issues. He could need a name. He could need to go immediately. And also, my brother goes to school. Like, there are school buses. There are children. You know, I'm worried about the speed limit. Thirty miles per hour seems pretty fast to me.
Another issue on the list.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That seems to be kind of what I have here, so. Everyone has kind of answered a lot of my, or asked my questions for me. I just thank you guys for your time.
I don't know. I live on Pumpkin Ridge. Um. Spent quite a bit of money purchasing the property and the house. And we chose. That's what the atmosphere was, the gravel and maintained roads. And I don't understand why we're building a. Such a wide road. But Hoover Road is much more an arrow. And, um, just a little confusion and. Entrust. Sounds like. You've been working on this for two years now?
Not us. No, I mean, the original, how it was in August ninth of twenty twenty two. The commissioners, three years ago, on April tenth of twenty twenty three, signed an agreement with DNR to request, uh, funding from the governor. Um, I didn't see what happened in twenty twenty four. We just got the package on March, in March. We got this project handed to us in March of this year.
So you three people can decide if it moves forward?
Yes. Okay, that's why we're having these meetings. That's kind of why I kind of explained, we're gonna. I think their intent was sign the contract and we'll start the work. And it's like, no, no, we're not going to sign the.
You and us just found out that that's not a good way to do it, is it?
No, no, it's not. And, yeah, no.
So we purchased this property and we worked over at a realtor. And we just found out about it when it said last week this was going on. It doesn't make sense to us. So it's hard for us to trust until there is more transparency in what's going on. And then when I found out that. We didn't know about signing the contract information until tonight, it just seems weird. It doesn't sound like a good idea to move very fast on this.
We never would have signed. They never would have signed.
You just found out.
I know there's at least two of us. We never would have signed the contract until we had the, the public meetings that we needed to do. So you. We got fought into the community and what we're going to do and address it. Because I never, I never would have signed it. I don't, I don't. I don't think I'm, I'm the only commissioner that would have not signed it.
Really concerned about, it looks like it is going to be a year-long project to build a road. Is that right? How would we get out and leave the project?
Nick, can you address that on what the construction might look like?
It's certainly something that's on our radar. I mean, I don't have any answers yet. I mean, because again, we're just kind of getting started on it, but surely I understand that's a huge concern. Uh, state specifications, uh, require the contractor to provide access to all property owners. Back to open public roads. That, that is, that is state regulation, so it must be done. Exactly how it's done, that's, that's one of the things we're, we're working on now.
How about, how about the forest? I'm, I'm sorry. It, it goes along with this question. Does the, it, to, is access to the forest, state forest guaranteed as well? To the public?
That is not guaranteed. I honestly haven't had a, a conversation with DNR whether, whether they're going to want. Access to the state forest all the time or just maybe certain times of the year. Initially, we're a little more want to focus on the property owners first. We'll figure out that plan and then, and then we'll, we'll figure out what access can be provided to the state forest during construction and then, you know. Okay, thank you.
Another, another issue on the list. So, thank you.
So it sounds like it's going to be more like, so we have a. Twenty-six foot wide road, is that right?
That's just the curve.
That's the curve. That's one option.
But then we're have also an access while this is going on.
Right.
We'll need something. So you have a bit more.
I apologize for coming to the mic again. Beth Laurie, um, I just wanted to, after hearing you guys talk. Call your attention to a couple of points in the contract copy that I got. That I would like for you guys to consider strengthening your position on. Uh, section two, the LPA, local public agency responsibility. It reads to me that if the local public agency requests changes, additions, improvements or exceptions to the standard design criteria. For its county road and NDOT approves. I'm concerned in that statement that NDOT has to approve changes to the criteria. The. Next page, if you go on to.
Definitely, I wish there were page numbers on this thing.
I know. Yeah, this is essentially the second page, LPA's responsibilities. I'm concerned that, if, section two, LPA responsibilities, subsection one A. I'm concerned that that gives the state the final design authority. That it would not necessarily rest with the county. The next page, which would be subsection. Page, let me see, one, two, I'm sorry, I was wrong. I could give you my copies. Um, when I get to, um. There's another section, changes in work. That the LPA shall not commence any additional work or change the scope of the work until authorized by the state in writing. That makes sense, but essentially I want you guys to make sure that you hold the power and the scope of the design. That the state doesn't have the sole decision-making authority in whether or not it is a two-lane paved road that goes in there. Or if it's improving the gravel road that's currently there.
And Beth, that's a good reference, like a two-faced approach. We'll identify as many of our requirements that we can and then we'll have those checked. And we've got to reconcile the contract, the schedule as they're going through so that we can make those requirements, uh, integrated. So when there's a delta, what can I do at this decision point?
Right. We sign the contract.
Yes, is that loud in the contract?
And, and just tomorrow's point, that property in the surrounding area, Pumpkin Ridge Road, Hoover, the road back in, the ridge back in behind it. Has always been called Rattlesnake Bridge. So expect to, expect that type of rattlesnakes as you guys get back in there.
That's a whole different range of terms in it.
Well, I know, I mean, Rattlesnake Bridge, and they are an endangered species, so I'm hoping that we don't, you know, really run into a lot unless we get back in there.
Yes, thank you.
County resident, Hoover Road. Couple of observations. One. Hoover Road's not ever had yellow lines painted down. We're going to paint yellow lines down this thing? It's way overkill. My other observation is, I go out to Cricket Creek, gravel road. We've been asking for, I know myself, for ten years to fix that bridge out there. The DNR has told us to beat sand. We've tried to get their help to get access out there. No help to fix that bridge. They told us to beat sand every time.
Yep, it's on our agenda, talking Elkinsville Bridge.
It's been on the damn agenda for ten years.
We got four point four six, four point six word million from the feds.
From the DNR?
From the feds.
No, from the DNR. Trying to get the DNR to cooperate with us because it's access to their property. They will not cooperate one dime.
Okay. Yeah, we'll address that.
And now we want to spend seven million dollars to a parking lot? My other, here's my question. They're talking about. Camping. How many campsides? They're, they're saying it's going to be, uh, no electric, no water. That means we got generators running. They ain't going back there and not have electricity. Them campers is going to all have generators running. And there's no dump site. Are we going to put in a dump site? Are we gonna put in a dump site? Maybe you can get that question answered.
Thank you.
And here's Rattlesnake Bridge, I grew up there.
I did too, Rattlesnake Bridge.
Skeeters.
Yeah, and I can show you pictures of the rattlesnakes.
Uh, Nate Nichols, Kelly Reed, and Stark by Mr. Tunnel, if I do a movie, I mean, voiceover.
Yeah.
I just, I, I, like, you guys heard about this two days ago, a day ago. Um, and I can only imagine as a resident of Pumpkin Ridge, how frustrating and aggravating that would be. Um, but what I'm reminded of is, I, I haven't heard, we're talking about eminent domain. We're talking about taking land from individuals who, whether it's, whether it's an acre, a quarter acre, if they're just coming over and swiping a little bit, that's somebody's land. That's somebody's pride and joy. They've worked for it, they defend it, they take care of it.
Pay taxes on it.
They pay taxes on it. And somebody's gonna come in and say, don't worry, we're gonna pay you for it. And they say, this is a good offer. This is, this'll make you happy. And that, that to me is, is, that just boils right down to it, you know? You're, you're thinking about, not you guys individually, but somebody's coming in, and, and not you, sir, you're, you're working for the company, the engineering firm, whatever it is, you're doing your job, I appreciate that. But somebody's coming in and gonna tell these folks, we need that, we're gonna take it. And I don't want that to be overlooked to, that's, to me, is just the topic. Um, and the other, the final thing that I just, I wanna get, I know you beating the dead horse here. It sounded like when Mr. Clark said that they're not gonna sign anything, but when they do, that it's in the state and NDOT's court. And it stays in their court? The county can never come back and say, whoa, we said no.
Sure, depend what the agreement says. I, I assume that the agreement establishes the county's rights.
Cause, cause it sounds like the public hearings and stuff don't happen until after you guys sign that agreement. Their public hearing, they're gonna promote.
Their public hearing, after we identify the scope of what we want and we've got the agreement, then they start. But we're gonna have, again, we talked about putting the checks in with the contract in their process to make sure when there's deviation of what we want, that we have.
It comes back.
It comes back to us for final approvals.
Cause I think that's, that's what it sounded like, everybody's just like, wait, we, we don't wanna have anything signed and not have that recourse. Yeah, so I, I appreciate that, and just, just the idea that, yeah, taking somebody's land is, it's not right.
Not right. Maybe mooned, but what was the first agreement that was signed in twenty twenty-two? And what did, what was, I'm sorry, did I misunderstand that?
Hell, there was no agreement signed.
What was that for fact in twenty-two?
Yeah.
I think you only spoke, or, you know, when you said there was an agreement when the letter was signed for DNR. There was no agreement, it was just basically acknowledgement from the board of commissioners at that time that they were interested in looking at moving and taking, moving and taking action on Pumpkin, Pumpkin Ridge Road.
With, with.
There's a letter that's been part of this package that's there, that mentioned that the board of commissioners.
I'll read, I can read it to you, in April twenty twenty-three, it says, just says a paragraph, Grand County Commissioners and Department of Natural Resources request that the county road named Alton Ridge Road from Hoover Road to the entrance of Mountain T State Forest be improved to provide better public access. The length of the pros improvement project from Hoover Road is approximately point eight miles, and also include improvements to the parking entrance to State Forest. It was a request.
Okay.
That's all, there's no, never any agreement, so if I misspoke.
Understood that there was something that was an agreement between the county and.
No.
Okay, making sure there was nothing else, nothing else, thank you.
If I misspoke, thanks for correcting.
That's what I wanna make sure, thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate something for everybody here, is they just stood here and told us. They stood here and told us all that tonight's the night. You have something to say, stand up here and say, I don't, we can get this over with soon. The, the sooner people come up with these questions and whatnot, because I don't wanna be the only one up here making sure they understand they're here on our behalf. It's not supposed to be their idea, it's supposed to be our idea. I didn't come up with this idea, and I don't know anyone that did. I've faced you folks, and I'm gonna just reiterate this, and I'll end with this statement. It's not to be your project. I've heard that stated twice. It's not to be their project. If something comes to this community, it's supposed to be, go, we want it. And it doesn't sound like from what's happening here, receiving, that's at all what I'm seeing. And I just wanted to say that for the record.
Oh, no. Should we know? Six point agree. Sorry. I'm, I'm Mr. Obvious, State the Obvious. I believe what I'm hearing, I hope you're all hearing the same thing. Is the president's saying, we're not gonna sign nothing in the back room. We're not, we don't sign any of this stuff at the two o'clock meetings. It will be a six o'clock meeting. He stated, we'll have multiple meetings. Uh, the state is on a timeline, because what I read in the contract, if the money don't get appropriated by a certain time, the money goes away. So. Pardon? For a while. Yeah, but that's, that's part of it, and like I said, I state the obvious, he's saying, we're not gonna sign no backroom deal. It's gonna be at a six o'clock meeting, and we'll run through all that, and in the end, we'll see, we'll see what happens. Go ahead, I'm sorry, interrupt.
You're, you're good. I'm off it, I'm on seventy-four of two pumpkin Ridge Road. Um, I just wanna say that we have a natural spring well on our property. That was given to us by nature. That is priceless, you cannot put a price on that. There's no amount of money that could fix that if you take that away from us. And there are ponds that the other residents use for their water. And if you pave this road, you're gonna poison them. Either our wells, ponds, that nature, they, they, they drink out of these, and we see them. I spend time in our woods with wildlife, that's what I, I love about our property. I can come home from work and I can take a walk, and it's peaceful, it's quiet. And you're, if you sign this, it's all gonna go away. And that, I'm. That's not okay. I want you to think about, would you be okay signing this if this was connected to your property? Would you be able to say, yeah, go ahead, state, come in, without, you know, knowing what they want? Yeah, just sign it, here you go. And then they come in and take two hundred feet or more, whatever they decide is appropriate after the fact? Think about that, would you be okay with that on your property? That's what I'm asking.
Well, no, and we're not gonna allow.
You know, I'm just, well, as, as a, you know, just a day ago, or just, you know, I guess today, I was under the impression that you were gonna sign, this was gonna be signed tonight. It's okay, y'all shake your heads, I'm good. I'm just saying, I want you to think about the people this affects, the wildlife, our trees. We have a mighty oak on our property. It is how far around?
Two hundred, he measured it?
Yeah, he measured it, but he can't guarantee me anything. There's no guarantee for anything, and there's no, there's no money you can give to replace that. You cannot take things that nature gives us and expect to put a price on it. That's not okay. And even our property, yeah, you can put a price on it, but it's, it's priceless to us. It means something to us, we worked hard for it. And I just, I just want you to think about that. I want the trees protected, I want the wildlife protected, I want our water supplies protected, and I wanna guarantee you that they're not gonna come in and drill wells for whatever fun time they wanna have down there and hit our, our spring, or do something else. Because you don't know what their agenda is, because they're not gonna tell you. They're not gonna tell you until it's too late.
I hear.
Thank you.
My name is Indy and I'm a fairly recent resident of Brown County. And we moved here four years ago from the city rush, I call us, um, city getaway people. And, um, when we moved here, we really just hoped to find the peace and quiet of nature, but we've also found one of the most beautiful people that I've ever met in my life. And, um, the people of Brown County are authentic and not afraid to be themselves. And they just proved it tonight with every voice, with every idea, with letters, with, um, the peace of their soul and their hearts. And I am so honored to be a part of this community. This is not a matter only of Brown County, it is a matter of how we are as humans, how we treat our nature, and how we treat each other. And so this is much more than just a little paved road, you know, in the middle of nowhereness. It is truly, um, crucial. This decision that you guys are gonna make eventually will decide so many, um, decisions in the future, including the rattlesnakes, the butterflies, um, deer, and creeks, and fish, and trees, and whatnot, and the word blinding. It's scary, um, and frightening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just wanna say that I believe that we should have just a, we are an unmaintained gravel road right now. Unmaintained county road, my bad. Why can't we just not go to a maintained county road and keep it gravel? The part off of our property is already seventeen feet. You can pass cars, we have. I mean, we've done that before. So I just don't understand why, and the state should be fine with that if they're not planning to make like a landing strip or something behind our house. Because that's, at this point, it's going to be the biggest road in the county. Yes, so, yeah, I wanted to say gravel road, please.
All right, well, let me summarize. Can you summarize and close this section of the meeting? Um, for one, I guess, um, one of the things that came out, it's just a communication thing that we, we need to do a better job, and we'll do that. Uh, we never had an intent to sign this contract at any, any time that's been on the agenda. It came up in, what was it, uh, May? Uh, no, there were two no votes, we had a lot of community input at that time, so we'll have another meeting. We had information we got from DNR in June, and then July, we had another meeting. Then we had more information that, that popped up. And then as more that word got out, more information came out, then we got a different kind of contracts, we had to look at that, so we'll have another meeting. So now we had this meeting, well, and that, that identifies even more requirements and things we need to plug in. So we're working through the process, but just some missed information, we never intended to, to rush this thing through, because we didn't understand what the total process was gonna be. So again, I, I give you assurance there, um, we'll go through the meetings, we'll identify your requirements, we're documenting, we'll try to come up with options, you know, that people can buy into, and that NDOT will buy into and can, and see if we can go forward that. That's the plan. And so when we have that kind of agreement, then, then we sign the agreement, then we make sure that the agreement makes it through all the way, and that we, we can see that oversight. So that's the process, phase one, phase two, this is the painful part. I think that potentially they never intended to have the commissioners spend so much time before they sign the contract, and, and we're just not built that way. So we're gonna make sure we, you know, we identify those requirements and, and get those in through it, or we don't do it.
That's true, back, and if they sign, if you sign the contract, she's already stated, the person from the state has already stated, it's a done deal. It won't be in your control, it'll be there, that's what's concerning.
Depends on the, the agreement, and that's what we're gonna review, it depends on the agreement, you get it right. So when it goes through the process, we want that, that approval, for yes or no. And then make, and then, of course, it's gonna be a question of when we can, we can, or put a stop to it. I don't know what that's gonna look like, but we certainly know the questions we need to ask. So we get so far and we go, this has gone off the trails, it's not what we intended, then I just wanna make sure we build that in, into the contract, so we got that out clause, if, if we need one. Hopefully, if we do our job upfront, we don't need the out clause, that's the intent.
Kevin, I'm, I'm just sorry, I grew up here, I'm proud to say that my father worked for the county many years ago, and he used to say, a well-maintained gravel road was easier to travel on in the winter than a path one. He cussed it was a certain road that we had got, um, because he couldn't get around. And I think that the key word there is well-maintained, has anyone thought to put together an estimate of a well-maintained gravel road back Pumpkin Ridge?
That's gonna have to be part of the, part of the analysis.
Part of the analysis, so we'll get, you know, you'll get that?
That's an option, yeah, I'd say you have at least three to four options, pros and cons of each option include the cost, so, yeah, we'll look at that.
I might hear that, thank you.
Yep.
My name is Brayden, and I was just wanting to wonder why do we have to, um, push like this tonight? Like, why can't we just wait, get another meeting or two of the publics, to be, before we sign the contract?
We're not signing the contract, no.
They're not gonna sign it.
They're not gonna sign it.
Right.
Well, where that information came out, but that's never accurate.
Well, it sounds like whenever, uh, listening back there, um, it sounds like you're more like on the side, you're already wanting to sign it, even though you haven't heard everybody in the counter.
That's not, I don't think that's what I've been saying.
So it sounded like, sounded like, I didn't say that. You didn't say you were, it sounded like that.
Okay.
Well, you keep saying when we sign the contract, not when we sign the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess one of the options is do nothing. That'd be one of the options, but if that's, if that's where we're going, then that's why we don't sign a contract, right? I mean, do nothing is always an option.
I've been holding a present for years.
Hey, Sam, I wanna take the time to offer a special thank you to the young man that was just standing up there. I was battling hay one day, we're a hundred degrees, heat index, and the young man showed up with his buddy, said, help me. Because I, I doubt that I could have made it out of that field without a stroke, or even be in the lot. So I appreciate that, young man.
One more comment?
One more time. I can't get enough the first time. My comment about Crooked Creek was a little bit about the bridge, just because we've tried to get help from them, and they wouldn't give us no help. But I wanna point out, it's a gravel road. It's always been a gravel road, they don't have a problem with that. So why does this one have to be blacktopped road? My second question was, I never got an answer to how many campsites are we gonna have back there? And are horses permit, gonna be permitted? Because if so, then we now have a horseman's camp. Can I get some answers?
The intent is, it's not gonna be a horseman's trail, horseman's camp at all.
No horses back there?
No, it's gonna be primitive, primitive's different than what we call A or double A recreation. Primitive is no campsites, we have two trails that in State Forest has been, uh, just what we call primitive camping, and you camp along the trail, and you camp in woods where you want. There's not gonna be any, what I call improved campsites at all.
No designated sites.
Never was, again, you gotta keep in mind that there's no water and electricity back there, so this is gonna be a primitive operation.
That doesn't matter, you got a camper.
Yeah.
You agree with the law, we didn't?
No, I was agreeing with the fact that campers do have, electors have, bring in their own electricity. So again, there's no, uh, there's no ulterior motive here, this is always gonna be primitive, it's always been intended to be primitive. If we wanted to improve it, we would have spent a ton of money putting electric and water in, which we didn't.
There is RV campers.
There that, no. Primitive camping is different than campers.
Well, you, can you define that as camp camping, no RV camping?
Yeah.
Yeah, so primitive campers, kids brought down the gravel road?
That's cool.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to walk in.
Okay.
But they can draw it down a river.
Again, when you go to camping, you're gonna walk in, it is not going to have, that's why we're putting the, the parking lot outside. In the case of, you're gonna walk in.
I hope we've only got a red carpet that's three quarters of a mile long for primitive.
So, let's, just gotta wrap it up. So let's just kinda wrap it up.
Primitive camping, homeless. Everybody from the state's around.
Okay, folks, I wanna end. I'd like to end the public session now, if that's okay. We're gonna have more meetings. So, and I'm sure there's safety, I forgot one, bring up the next one. So we'll try to document, recording for the audio, capture things, then they're scheduling.
They already are.
Thank you for this part.
Thank you, we gotta move on.
Can we take five minutes for those?
I'm gonna break.
I don't know if this is important, or if there's whatever that, we're gonna change it.
Follow me back to work. Next item on the agenda is the appointment. We have one qualified informant to board health, Chrissy Crandall. Thank you, you presented your proposals two meetings ago.
Yeah, thank you, and my CV and application and all that.
Okay. It's interesting, when we went through the requirements for the board, there's a seven-member board, and there's a political component of that. So again, we've got four Republicans, and you've gotta have a bound, so you have a Democrat, I'm assuming you're a registered Democrat. So guys, have a motion, Chrissy?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Chrissy Crandall to the health board.
I wanted to make a motion.
Go call. Tim Clark, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kevin Sanford?
Sanders. The answer to that question is yes.
Ron Sanders.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience. I know it was a long process. You know, we had, went through the hoops, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll, I guess, go to find when the next meeting is.
For help.
Yeah, they'll send an email.
We'll alert them to this, that you're getting a point.
All right, thank you.
All right, now have a good afternoon.
Thank you. They are five favorite, they can contractual services, county bids and appraisals.
Yeah, so let's go through the first one that we have, basically, again, it's been a topic in the meetings itself. We're looking at basically proceeding and considering either a swap or a purchase or swap of buildings between the prosecutor's office and the national police department. So we had to go out as part of the statutory requirements and get a, get quotes in order to get two appraisals done for each building. We're proceeding forward tonight with recommending, or I'm proceeding forward with recommending, out of the three quotes that we have, Stevens Realty Advisors and Rich Fig. Stevens Realty Advisors came in at twenty-five-hundred dollars. Rich Fig came out at three thousand dollars, so that'd be a total of five thousand five hundred dollars for the county appraisal side of this. And the third bid, which was four thousand dollars. So I'm making a motion that we proceed with getting engaged and getting a contract signed in place with Stevens Realty Advisors and Rich Fig.
Quick question. This is the appraiser, we're hiring, the town has to hire two of us.
So the recommendation and what I had discussed with them is that we would work together and I, we would identify the appraisers that we could use. So this is information, they have pricing on same two appraisers. And it falls within line, so I expect that the town council will take that up in their next meeting.
All right, I'll second your motion.
Call Kevin Patrick?
Yes.
Ron Sanders?
Yeah.
And Clark?
Yeah.
Next one, Elkinsville Bridge.
Elkinsville Bridge, so as you mentioned earlier, Tim, this is just a notification. We did receive an award letter from NDOT for an amount of four million six hundred forty-six thousand four hundred dollars, of which we have a twenty percent match. That bridge is on our list of repairs. And that particular, so the award letter basically states that we need to go and proceed forward with engineering services and other aspects right away, utilities and things of that nature. Our superintendent's already taken it under, under purview and taking action to move forward with getting the proper information in place so that we know how we're going to proceed forward with that bridge. But it's just a public notification that we've received that award and that we will be working towards putting the paperwork in place with NDOT to continue to receive those funds.
Thank you. Question. Paul Nelson again, I was just wondering, which bridge are you talking about?
Elkinsville Road runs out to Blue.
That's up at Combs Road Bridge.
Yeah, it's a big wooden long bridge. Yes, that bridge.
There's a bridge that you the, the one at Combs Road where you
No, no, no. That's a great big long bridge. So if you take Elkinsville Road and you go all the way out, you will see, I think it's at Blue Creek, or I can't remember the other bridge. It's road. It is the road, Blue Bridge, that you go veer left. It is a long wooden bridge that will be replaced.
Okay. It can be found on Google or
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item, the clean contract.
Yeah, this is just a reiteration that our contractor for cleaning services here within the, within the county have given us notice. We are working on an RFP at this point in time, and the hope is to hope, the hope was to have it done by this week, at the end of the week to put out. But that's probably gonna extend a few days. So if there's anyone interested within the audience or online listening, we will be putting out an RFP at some point, and likely we'll try and do several different channels to get the information out to encourage interest.
Elevator repairs.
All vehicles are centered? Correct. So the next, the consideration that we have is there was a need of repair in the law enforcement center. I did not realize that we had two elevators in that building, but there are two. The main elevator that feeds the horseshoe, which is in the, goes up to the dispatch area and does prisoner overlook, that is in need of repair. We have worked with a company called Elevated and negotiated the terms with that. And I've even provided that information to you two gentlemen. I recommend that we proceed forward with signing that contract so we can get this taken care of because there is a individual in dispatch that is struggling physically. And we need to get as quickly repaired as possible. So recommendation or motion is to move forward and sign the elevated contract as presented.
And you made a change in the contract and they approved it, correct?
Correct. We had to change live terms. We basically went one hundred, one hundred percent payment on completion of work. We actually secured a twelve, twelve warranty on the parts that are gonna be provided.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, real call.
Ron Sanders?
Yes.
Tim Clark?
Yes.
Kevin Patrick?
Yes.
And our last one is category, the EMA backflow preventer.
Yet again, this is a small contract for a little over fourteen hundred dollars. We have basically reviewed that contract. There was a proposal. We've made form, we've added a page for amendments because we want to move this forward. Again, that's another safety device, an EMA building that needs to be replaced in the dry chemical system. So the document that I presented to you is amended with four terms. And we need to sign, I propose that we sign that tonight and submit it to the person for their approval.
You made the motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Go call.
Tim Clark?
Yes.
Kevin Patrick?
Yes.
Ron Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, Teresa?
Okay. Updates on the OOR grant, the modified rehabilitation grant. We did submit a replication, it looked really good. We had a lot of letters from different people in the community to support it. We had a huge outpouring with the applications, and our, our application looked really good with the state. So Wendy has got that done for us. We will find out if we get the grant money September thirtieth.
And this, this was the five hundred thousand dollar?
Yes.
Then we add fifty-five thousand dollar matching.
Yes.
And did we get, the number of applicants, did we get that number? Last I heard, it was thirty-two?
Oh, no, it's probably more like forty-five at this point.
Forty-five, okay, this is a great zip.
Yes.
Real quick, real quick, I believe Mr. Allen stated there's another project or that you hit, there's like multi-million dollars available.
Be happy to.
I don't wanna, we could, that's fine, but let me get through my stuff and then he can do his because I don't want, there's a lot of confusion between these two programs and I let's just
Stick the chin.
Okay, oh, I'll let it. There, the Red Grant, I did an update on that. There is no information right now on that from Wendy or myself. I've got nothing.
The tolls, August, so.
Yeah.
They got, they got us told.
So this week, this week, last week, Eric and I went to the NDOT training for Title VI. And we found out that because we are now receiving federal money, we basically need to put our big boy pants on, and we have a lot of things that we need to fix. There's a lot of processes that we are doing that aren't up to par. There are processes we don't have in place because we've never dealt with the federal side of this before. So, but we got a lot of stuff that's gonna be coming down the pike between highway auditor's office and our office for procedures. And I'm not gonna go into the website. I was, I was gonna do an example of the website, but we're kind of pressed for time, and Eric's got bids. I do, however, I did put on the employee holiday schedule. We usually approve that in August, September. So auditor, do you have anything to say about that?
I say we approve it. I went it over already, and I think it looks good.
It's got fifteen days. Last year we had sixteen, and it's got two election days on there that are extra, and we kept Juneteenth on there.
Great. Have motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Go call.
Kevin Patrick?
Yes.
Ron Sanders?
Yes.
Tim Clark?
Yes.
Thank you, Teresa.
Yeah.
Eric, you're on. Clark Deets contract?
Yes. So let me
I was gonna say, I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, right, so the, so let me give that beat on that. So basically, Clark Deets was basically low bidder when it came to going forth and seeking engineering services for the pre-designed work for Bridge Ninety-One, which is Mount Liberty. They, he went out and sought, sought and had discussions and information from USI consultants. He just, Clark Deets, Clark Deets came in as, with the lowest number as in the preliminary quotes. So Eric then moved forward with preparing and identifying scope of work and enhancing the details with regards to what's gonna be required to replace that bridge. And while he worked that aspect of it, I worked the contract side of it and the terms and conditions. We had submitted several changes to that. They have accepted those changes. The contract document that's sitting in front of you as presented includes everything we have discussed. And if I'm not mistaken, I will try and give a clear number here, we have it in front of you. The total contract value at this point in time with Clark Deets would be
Two hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and eighteen.
Two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. I don't know what that got, we got to that past, I did.
Been telling me, I've been looking quick today.
Yeah, you went a lot faster. All right, when was this? So I make a motion that we approve or signature this contract to proceed forward with this design firm.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Go call.
Ron Sanders?
Yes.
Tim Clark?
Yes.
Kevin Patrick?
Yes.
Next item, excavator replacement.
So again, I'll take the lead if you want me to.
If, if you want to, you can. I've got your papers here, and the papers we looked at.
So actually, you know what, let me step back. I've been busy, you, you take this one.
So we've, we've talked about the, the excavator that we currently have on a lease with Cap. That lease is up in December. We got the paperwork from Cap, Caterpillar to, to buy that out. Originally, I was told eighty-five thousand. It's ninety, ninety-seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars to buy it out. The issue, you know, one of the issues we're having with that machine, it's a great machine, we have two of them. It, it, you know, and you need a big machine like that, you need a big machine. But the, the problem we're having is the weight of it. The weight of it's almost forty-four thousand pounds. So we have a number of roads that have been just tore up by this machine, just a, just a few. Short shoot, which we've had a lot of complaints about, that was damaged. Some of that damage was from our three-eighteen Cap. Hamilton Creek, Albert Johnson, Orchard, Dunaway, Cover Bridge, Poplar Grove, and Harrison Ridge have all had damage from that forty-four thousand pound machine. That machine is great, but if you're trying to use it in the spring with the rain and the thawing, it's just too hard on the road edges. They just break, they crumble. So the, the only replacement we could find that seemed to fit the bill, we looked at Volvo, we looked at Cap, Cap doesn't offer anything that's maybe six thousand pounds less. It's, it's, it's called a JCB, and what they call it's a Hydrodig. It's basically a wheeled excavator. I have information, pictures. We demoed one. They dropped it off to us for about a week, almost two weeks. It's, you know, decked out, it's twenty-six thousand five hundred and seven pounds. So you're, you're talking a little over eight, almost nine tons less. So looking at options, you know, that's probably the best option that, that we need to do comparing to Volvo, Cap, anyone else that we, we looked at. So I don't, I don't want to purchase the lease for ninety, ninety-seven thousand dollars. I want to turn it back in and buy the order of the JCB, and we can do that. I don't wanna lease it, I wanna just, you know, we budgeted for it this year, wanna just buy it. We use part of the money that we would've had on the lease, we use some of that money. The, the purchase price itself on the, on the Hydrodig is two hundred and two hundred and ten thousand dollars. See, I'm gonna paper it through. two hundred and ten thousand dollars. See, I'm a paper's good.
No, no, let me up here.
It's, yeah.
And so the source bulk price, which we operate under their contract now without the options that you selected, the two hundred and four thousand dollars, five hundred, two hundred and four thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars and twenty cents. The added options that you selected with means thumbs and things that nature which are necessary is twenty four thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars and twenty five cents. Delivery, install of options and inspection fees, according to information that you shared and we went over was eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty three dollars. The additional discount that we got from the vendor was twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty six dollars and twenty five cents. There is a proposal and actually relieving an asset of a road grader that is in poor condition. It's a six, seven, two. And if I'm not mistaken, it's late model, year two thousands. They are giving a high estimate or a high trade in value of twenty five thousand dollars. The trade in value for that particular machine looking at is anywhere from eleven to thirty thousand dollars. And then the, as mentioned in the budgeting that he has in twenty twenty five, there is a thirty seven thousand dollar lease payment for the existing N three eighteen F that can be used. So taking all of those, taking that discount, that trade in and that payment, it brings the total value of purchase of a hundred and forty eight thousand, one hundred and twenty one dollars and twenty cents. So at that point in time, what else we get with that is twelve months with the warranty, we get a new machine that is zero hours. We're almost at four thousand hours on the existing machine and five years old. And then again, we are buying outright and not stepping into a lease.
So that's, that's what we'd like to do. Um, you know, there's, there's, we found one kind of default with the Hydrodig. It doesn't have um pilot controlled steering, which when you're using it to ditch, you can't steer with it if you're backing up. Um, so you know, that's something that we can address. It's not a major issue, but it, it does crab walk. It does a lot of different maneuvers. The visibility out of this machine is a lot, a lot better. You can actually see three sixty around it where in the other one, you cannot see three sixty around it. So and then just the weight of itself, you know, twenty, twenty three, twenty four thousand pounds or so without any attachments on it. So I would like to move and purchase, go ahead and get a purchase so they can build this machine out. It'll be several months before we can get it. Hopefully by the time we turn in, our other machine will be close to having this machine.
Point of order, President. Stitch board. Uh, don't we have two of those great big cat excavators?
We do.
And the one's got a lot higher miles on it? We're going, you want to keep it?
The older one, when I first got here, it wasn't working at all. It had set for several years. Um, last year going through and fixing things, we spent several thousands of dollars on this machine. Um, you know, fixing leaks, uh, wiring harnesses, uh, numerous things. And since then, we've been using that machine off and on to do random jobs that are needed um to lift bigger culverts, bigger things when the other machine's being used for ditching. So yeah, I'd like to keep the older one so we can still use it as a part-time machine as needed for bigger.
My suggestion would be get rid of the older one and keep the newer one.
We don't have the ninety seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. To pay for it if we consider getting the Hydrodig.
No, but we have the money to buy the other new one?
We have the money to buy it.
But you can't use that money to pay off the lease payment on the other?
Well, we're, we're kind of, sorry.
You find it, go ahead.
Um, we're kind of being, you know, you know, we go out and ditch is, which is great, you know, things need ditch, things need cleaned up. The problem we're having is in certain times of the year when we're using this machine, we're, you know, go look at these roads, we're tearing these roads up. So we're having to go back and either cut them out, patch them or wait until we have the money to pave them. Um, this machine, we could, we could get out there and use it more all year round and we don't have those pavement issues like we do with this heavier machine. If we keep the old machine, it's bought and paid for. We don't owe anything on it. Right now, we're keeping maintenance up on it. It just got serviced again a week or so ago. So we're, we're able to use it when needed, when we need a bigger machine. Um, that way we can, we can kind of have the best of both worlds.
Well, they'd actually been out there in the one I live on and it looks like it does a fine job.
Oh, the, the excavator does a great job. Um, it's, it's a great machine. It, it does exactly what it's made to do. It's just, like I said, the problem is, is, is weight wise, you know, you have these smaller roads that are narrower and have less base on them. You just tear them off.
Yeah. Do you have a, an estimate on what you think the older machine would be worth?
Uh, we have not had that looked at because I had no intention, so I'll get rid of it.
No, I believe he's asking you about the one we're looking at lease.
No, no, he's saying, he's asking about the old, older.
What is it? What's it worth?
I haven't had a, a value put on it because I, I didn't want to let it go. I thought it was worth more to us um to keep than to, I probably spent ten to eighteen thousand dollars on that machine last year, getting it, getting to where we could actually use it because it wasn't being used at all. It couldn't be used. So we spent the money on it. I wanted to put that money to good use and actually get some, some use out of it, get, get some return back.
Right. Any more discussions, Mr. Sanders?
I, I'd make a motion to table that until we try and figure out what the old ones were, kind of weigh it and see. I, I don't really like getting rid of the best pieces of equipment and keeping the older piece of equipment. I mean, you're going to have to, you, you're basically stating you're going to take that other machine out for the big jobs. And if you're going to buy the other machine anyway, you know. Well, I like, I like a little more information.
Okay, the, the big jobs I, I refer to is like if we're replacing a five, six foot culvert pipe or when the culvert pipe on Hoover got uprooted from the storm, um, we needed both our excavators out there and the bigger machine was actually able, because that pipe was, you know, sixty foot or whatever long, was able to pick it up and set it in place. It wasn't being used. You know, a ten hour shift or anything. It was used several hours that day and you know, maybe a couple hours the next day and then it was parked, you know, in the roadway block on the road. Um, the Hydrodig, the new piece of equipment would be used, you know, and, and it would be put into the ditching crew. It would be used all the time and we wouldn't be using the old one for ditching. That's, that's all I got. So and then of course we, after, we can do bids and.
Do look for more information on?
Sure.
Um, couple weeks.
Um, for a value on, yeah. So I, I can do that. I, we did a value on the, the one um that we're going to, we want to turn back. Um, the two trade ins we have, I think one was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar value and one was eighty. Eighty, eighty five thousand?
Eighty.
Eight thousand. Um, so I'll kind of give you a comparison maybe, I guess, to the newer machine that's, you know, um, but whatever you guys decide. I'm just offering my recommendation.
I appreciate the analysis. So is that, do we need to move? Do you have a motion, your motion room?
I made a motion to table until we take a look at it.
I'll, I'll second it. We can make the decision next, next time. Go call.
Um, Tim Clark, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Kevin Patrick?
No.
Ron Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now I have, uh, so local paving, we, we put out advertisements. Um, we have four, five contractors pick up bid packets. We have three contractors turn in bid packets. Um, so we can open these up. This is local paving, all local money, no, no grants.
Please clarify what roads we are seeking to pave?
So what's included in this is Grandview Road, Sawmill, four hundred and Grandma Barnes. So we have, we have spent um about twelve thousand dollars in the last couple of weeks on Grandma Barnes with culverts. They actually arrived today at our, our location. So we're prepping for it. We have several large culverts to replace under the road there. Um, so there's improvements there and then we're, we're going to get, hopefully the bids are good. We'll, we'll get everything paved. So our goal is to get all four of those roads paved, um, as long as we have the money to actually do these bids. Um, first bid I'll open up is from Howard Companies. I'll get you.
Okay.
First thing that you heard.
All right.
Okay, so this bid, they marked it for me. That's nice. Uh, one million, nine hundred and sixty three thousand, three, or eight hundred and eighty four dollars. That's from Howard. Uh, next one will be from Dave O'Meara. They did not mark it, so there are. They, they put it right here.
Okay.
They written it out.
Yeah.
It, it, it appears to be, and I, and I'll double check, but they written it out. It's not wrote down. It looks like nine hundred and seventy two thousand, seven hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty cents. And the last one is from Monitone. And there's what's like eight hundred and forty four thousand, six hundred and ninety four dollars and seventy five cents. So we'll, uh, we'll, we'll go through these. We'll get them submitted to the attorney. I'll, uh, have the we can overcheck all the tablets out and make sure they're, make sure they're good. So and then we can do some recommendations.
You think you'll have a recommendation by next meeting?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, because our, our timeline for this, you know, we were obviously hoping for the second committee crossings grant. It didn't happen in timely manner. So we're going this route, but our, our, we want to get this done as soon as possible so we can get these roads paved before the end of this year. So that's, that's our goal. We want to use this year's budget, this year's money, get this done, try to get ahead of the game. So. Um, and then the last thing I have, we were presented um by our, our new, new in October, bridge consultants for our four-year bridge con, inspection contract, some updated, um, some updated requirements. Um, Kevin Allen's here. He can, he can help explain some of these requirements and why, why the fees have gone up, uh, of course, up on there.
Thank you. I'm Kevin Allen with Eegis. Uh, everybody knows me. Uh, glad to be here tonight. Wish it would have been earlier, but here we go. Um, well, the federal government did it to us again. Um, they have increased the work and frequency of the inspection cycle on some certain types of bridges. Um, this is across the entire program nationwide. Every county that's in Indiana and every consultant that's doing this work got hit with this. So um, based on the number of bridges you've got, the type of bridges, it increased by about eighty two thousand dollars. Now, that's the total. This is an eighty twenty local match. So the Brown County portion of that is twenty percent. And it is spread out over the four years of the inspection program. So uh, twenty percent, it's, you know, sixteen thousand dollars and change, give or take over a four-year period. And it varies from year to year because of the number of bridges that are being inspected on the new cycle. But it averages out to between four and five thousand.
So. So I have the exact total based on that. The actual twenty percent match based on the increase in supplement is sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty three dollars and fifty nine cents. So if you take that over, so that's going to be spread over a four-year period.
Correct. So it's not, it sounds bad and I hate when someone changes the game after we started playing, but that's what they've done to us. So there we are.
And I think if I remember correctly, when we talked about this, Eric, you already have funds present for the first part of this as far as covering the additional fees associated with the inspection.
Yeah, there, there, with everything, there may be a couple juggling acts, but yes, there's money, there's money there.
Okay. And then again, knowing this, I think we've got this in ahead of time. We were actually able to go through, but this additional cost into the twenty twenty six budget, correct?
Thank you.
Okay.
So yeah, this is, we just need to get this signed so we can get it submitted and they can ensure they get paid. So.
All right, a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the supplemental as presented.
Okay, I'll say it.
Go call.
Kevin Patrick?
Yes.
Ron Sanders?
Yes.
Tim Clark?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like?
And while you're there, yeah.
While you're there, yeah.
Um, I brought some of these in again. I didn't know how many of these you had. And I talked to Teresa last week, was it, um, out of state. Um, I know you had the O O R group meeting where Whitney and A R just explained the owner occupied renovation. Okay. This is a very similar project program to that, except this is a spinoff of the Inflation Reduction Act that uh got put in place under the Biden administration. Indiana was awarded or allocated a hundred and eighty two million dollars. And it is also an energy savings program. Slightly different structure. There's probably a seventy percent overlap with the applicable funding with the owner occupied grant that you just applied for. The owner occupied, you can get, you can replace your furnace. You can replace your refrigerator, replace your hot water heater. This program can do that also. The owner occupied program can also do structural repairs, uh, to the ADA ramp or replacing a bathroom door and make it wider for ADXF. And this is where it gets kind of, kind of tight here. This program, the Energy Saver, can put more insulation in your roof, new insulation in your roof. If you have water damage to your roof, rotted deck boards, the, this can't. The owner occupied program can. So we're doing this in about four other counties where we've got both projects under our program. Okay, both programs. So what we're doing is guiding certain homeowners to one program, another, or even doing a single homeowner, say, you do the ramp out of the owner occupied money and we'll get your refrigerator and hot water heater and furnace to attain that twenty percent energy savings out of who's your energy savings program, okay? That's kind of important and I'm happy to come and run a joint meeting with Whitney to explain this. You can stretch that five hundred thousand from the owner occupied to do much more structural repair and improvements to needed residences, okay? Why buy a hot water heater out of that limited five hundred thousand when you've got a statewide pool of a hundred and eighty two million in this program, okay? We can do many, many more homes, get many more homeowners with assistance if we coordinate these things, okay? And I could keep talking, but that's it in a nutshell. And I think I said, I can do this coming Monday.
So that you guys are aware. So what we are doing, I, I actually have a lady, Suzie Fwell here. She had taken this on with me. So anybody that we have worked with, with the O O R grant that would fall better into this, we're helping them with the applications online, which that application online is ridiculous, by the way.
Thank you.
Um, and she's doing it with them. There's a church group that's also working on this with people. So um, we are working at joint, but we're trying to keep, there was a lot of confusion.
I know.
Yeah. So we're, we're helping. Do you have a question, Clark?
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, I was unaware of the O O R grant. It sounds like something I would have been in. Yeah, I was wondering, oh, I was unaware of the O R grant. It sounds like something I would have been interested in. I admittedly, I wasn't that paying attention. I had others.
I will help you and, and we can talk about that.
Which they, check, talk to you after the meeting.
Okay. And not one to dwell, but you just applied for the O R grant yesterday or today. Is that right?
Friday this week.
Got submitted on Friday. Okay. This program has been active since in, near the end of May. Okay, this program, you can go to this website right now, today and see if you qualify. Okay? Check the, yes, take one with you. Um, you just got to try and get these out to the community because we can easily push that, well, forty-five number up to over a hundred if we, these two programs together.
I think Willie's more aware and I'm glad you guys weren't going to, Teresa, nice job.
Seeing that a lot of people, yeah, there's a lot of need and the O R grant just didn't even remotely fit the need, but this program did. So.
Then adding the scan code and the website. I'm supposed to add all matters. Okay, so thank you.
But we will put them out more to the community.
I've got more. Feel free to reach out and uh, happy to do what I can.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you. All righty. I got just a couple more things real quick. Um, so the, we talked about the culvert on Hoover Road that got tore up. That, that road section has been unpaid since we fixed it to let things settle and and we finally got with the asphalt contractor and his schedule. He'll be doing that Monday, the twenty-fifth. So the road will be closed at Lucas Hollow and Hoover for, for a time on that Monday. We've advertised it on our Facebook. Um, we were going to get some signs and get, get things going. So we've had some questions. That's what's going on. That, that red section is getting paved over that culvert. So, um, and then the next thing for you, Ron, you, how many, what kind of quotes did you want on this um, machine? So I, I hit your target.
I'll get two or three. Talk to the companies that you're doing the uh, valuation on the other one.
Okay, all right.
You got a number?
I just, that's gonna, no, I just don't know if you're wanting trade numbers or if you're wanting actual buy numbers. The reason I'm asking is because I don't think, I don't think we can trade that on like a new one because we won't have the money. We'll be, we'll be buying out the the other lease for ninety-seven and then we'll be trying to trade and purchase. I don't think, that's why I'm asking, if, if, if we can get like CNC, they gave us an estimate on a couple of things. Um, I could call and see if other companies would give us a buyout. I, I just want to make sure I hit the right info that you're looking for.
Well, the uh, kind of hard to do a buyout, isn't it? I mean.
But I, CNC came over and, and inspected a couple of things we had and, and actually emailed us a quote.
I don't think we can legally just do a buyout. It would have to go on.
No, I just meant for evaluation. So we, that, that's why I'm asking. I don't know how many of those I can get, but I can.
It'd be a good one. If you can get one more, that'd be good.
Okay. I just, like I said, I, I can get trade numbers. I just don't think, I don't think we could, we'd be, we'd be back to lease and, you know, after we pop this out, we'd be back to leasing something else.
See what you can figure out.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, make sure. That's all I have.
Right. And that is the agenda items. Um, Logan? Uh, Mike Kitty, comments? You there, Mike? Mike's still on there?
Yep, he's still here.
Yeah, no, I'm here. Sorry. I was muted. Uh, nothing to add.
Thanks, guys.